At six thirty PM, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Renee, can you please call roll?
At six thirty PM, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Renee, can you please call roll?
Ms. Era- Ms. Wilford, Mr. John, Mr. McDaniel.
Here.
Ms. Byrd.
Here.
Ms. Zink.
Present.
Mr. Beck.
Here.
Ms. Bayhan.
Here.
Mr. Jablonski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving to our consent items, starting with item one. Item one, approval of the July eighth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission regular session minutes and the August twelfth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission regular session minutes. Item two, COS two-one-two-two dash two, consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Brandon Stevens Pollard and Whitehead Survey, Inc. For Little River Estates for approximately one hundred and eighty point eight four two acres of property generally located at the northwest corner of Cedar Lane Road, closed, and a hundred and twentieth Avenue Southeast. Item three, COS dash two-one-two-two-three, consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Tony Wagner Kent Mace Mackbacks for Cedar Creek Ranch for approximately thirty acres of property generally located a half mile north of Etowah Road on the east side of a hundred and thirty-second Avenue Southeast. Item four, COS dash two-one-two-two-five, consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Pristine LLC Dodson Thompson Mansfield P L L C for the Sporting Club for approximately seventy-four point two-eight acres of property generally located south of West Indian Hills Road between Seventy-second Avenue Northwest and Sixtieth Avenue Northwest. Item five, PP two-one-two-two-two, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Farzani Development Group, L L L P, S M C Consulting Engineers, P C, for Destin Landing, a planned unit development for approximately ninety point six eight acres of property generally located south of East Cedar Lane Road and one-fourth mile west of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Southeast. Item six, S F P two-one-two-two-two, consideration of a short-form plat submitted by Oklahoma Investment Group, Ronald D. Smith, L S, for Cinnamon Creek Edition for approximately five point five-nine acres of property generally located south of East Brook Street to the east of Oklahoma Avenue. Item seven, S F P two-one-two-two-three, consideration of a short-form plat submitted by Osborne Properties, Inc., Mackbacks Land Surveying for Osborne Properties located at one-five-one-one Twenty-Fourth Avenue Southwest. And does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket? And if so, please announce which items are being pulled to be discussed in their regular order. Seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
And a vote.
Oh, forgot. Okay, you may vote. Okay, everyone has voted, and the motion carried six to zero.
Okay, moving to our non-consent items. I'm gonna start with items eight and nine. I'm gonna read them in order for the Sooner Traditions Spud. Item eight, R two-one-two-two-three-one, Sooner Traditions LLC and Hunter Miller Family LLC. Norman twenty-twenty-five Land Use and Transportation Plan from Office Designation and Low Density Residential Designation to Commercial Designation for one point three-three acres of property generally located at the northeast corner of Southberry Road and West Lindsey Street at ten-twenty-seven and ten-thirty-five Southberry Road. And item nine, O dash two-one-two-two dash one-five, Sooner Traditions LLC and Hunter Miller Family LLC request rezoning from R one Single Family Dwelling District and Co- CO suburban office Commercial District to Spud Simple Planned Unit Development for approximately one point three-three acres of property generally located at the northeast corner of Southberry Road and West Lindsey Street, one-zero-two-seven and one-zero-three-five Southberry Road. I believe we just need to postpone, but do we have any staff presentation? Uh, we, oh, we have a, we've got a staff presentation. I know we do have some.
No, we don't.
Just a comment. Okay, we do have some comment available that we had somebody come in, so before we make a vote to postpone, like to open that. Was there any other present? Do you need a presentation for the postponement?
No.
All right. Okay, so we'll just, I do have Dennis Yarborough. He has submitted for a comment.
Postponement?
We do have a comment, though. We do have a public comment.
Hi, Beth Muckulla, City Attorney's Office. On the agenda, it is only for a postponement for your consideration, not consideration of the underlying merits. So the proper action would be to consider the postponement at this time.
Okay, and invite this guest to come back again on another day, then, it sounds like, to make their comment?
Absolutely. The public hearing will happen when it is put on the agenda for live comment.
Okay. Um, I would recommend that you contact the city outside of the meeting so that we can help assist you in making the comment and getting dressed with the city at the right time. All right. Okay, so since we are looking for a post moment, do we have a motion for said postponement?
So moved.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted. Carried six to zero to postpone till next month.
And we look forward to seeing Mr. Yarborough in the future, too. Uh, moving on to the Food and Shelter Spud items, I'm gonna read them in order. It is item ten, O dash two-one-two-two-one-four. Food and Shelter, Inc. requests rezoning from PUD Planned Unit Development to Spud Simple Planned Unit Development for approximately one point zero-seven acres of property generally located immediately south of Lot One, Block One, Food and Shelter, Section One. And item eleven, PP dash two-one-two-two-five, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Food and Shelter, Inc., S M C Consulting Engineers, P C, for Food and Shelter Phase Two, a simple planned unit development for approximately one point zero-seven acres of property generally located east of Reed Avenue and approximately seven, seven-hundred-and-seventeen feet south of East Main Street. And we'll take the staff presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jane Hudson, Norman Planning Department. Uh, some of you may have actually been on commission when the first item for this location went forward. Um, as you stated, we're looking to rezone the existing PUD for this site. They're only rezoning the one point zero-seven acres, so that will come through as a spud because the requirement for a spud is less than five acres. Um, so they are proposing this rezoning. The previous PUD had this planned for residential units, and they're bringing this application forward tonight to change those uses. And what they're looking for is a food and resource center at this site. I don't know about y'all, but I can't see and wear these masks at the same time. Um, in, in the staff report, you'll see that the uses that they're looking for are the food resource center and then a homeless shelter and so on and so forth, with several of those uses that they've outlined there in their proposal. Uh, one of the things, go ahead and go through these slides. So the existing zoning in the areas, you can see the food and shelter PUD up to the north, and the subject tract is shown here. That's the piece that will go to the spud. The zoning across Reed is R two. You've got a little bit of RM six up there off of Main Street. The existing land use in the area, again, you've got the residential cottages there at the existing food and shelter. And across Reed, you've got single-family homes fronting Main Street. I believe there's some duplexes up there. This is the aerial of the site there. Again, you can see the cottages on the north side. This is actually looking at the site from the intersection of Eufaula and Reed. This is looking at, on the south side of the site, looking back to the east. Further south, and this goes into the remaining state property there. This is the extension of Reed that's going south there. Continuation of that. Then this is looking back to the north. You'll see the existing facility north on Reed. This is the residential house that's across the street. This is at the northwest corner of Reed and Eufaula. Uh, they've got an open space plan here for you, and again, it's one point zero-seven acres. They're looking at approximately a point four-three acres of open space or green area there for this development. Within the PUD, they've asked for a variance on this north side up there. There's a landscape strip, but it will be two feet. But on the north side of that, they're proposing to put a fence, which would also separate the new Resource Center from those existing cottages there. Going over to the east, the landscape area gets to be a little bit more than twenty feet in depth. This is the preliminary plat. And this is the preliminary site development plan for this development. You can see there's two access points there on Reed, which will allow any trucks that are coming through or any, the sanitation truck, you know, itself will have to make the loop there to pick up the dumpsters that you'll see on the north side. I will point out that you can see on this site plan that the applicants have proposed to place, if I can get the mouse down there. The front door is located on the north side of this Resource Center, so it will not be facing Reed Avenue and the residential units over there on the, the west side. So, staff, you know, we forward this request to you for the rezoning from the PUD to Spud as ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two dash fourteen. And staff is here to answer any questions. The applicant's representative is here, and they have a presentation for you as well on this item.
Are there any questions for the staff?
The, not yet.
So sorry, right now, this is for Planning Commission. Questions for the staff. So the order that we're gonna do is the staff is going to make a presentation. There, there will be questions by the commission for the staff, then the applicant will make a presentation. We'll ask the applicant questions. Following that, there will be an opportunity for any guest commentary to make. Everybody will be allowed three minutes to speak. Um, I will tell you from experience that three minutes does go quickly. So if you would like a warning thirty seconds before your time is up, I'd be glad to give that to you. Otherwise, I would defer to just give you your full time, but everyone will have a chance after we kind of get the presentation. Thank you.
And my apologies, I forgot this last slide. We do need to report that within the notification area, we received protest, and that does come to one point two-five percent within the notification area.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I take the applicant presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Sean Rieger, representing the applicant in this case. And it's a, it's really an honor for us to represent this matter. I was here in front of you quite a few years ago when we did the original location in, in this matter. And I remember it had a massive groundswell of community support when it was brought forward then. And I think it's continued as an organization that has had that groundswell of support throughout our community as one of the really premier organizations that handles services for our homeless community. It's a very simple mission that they have. Their mission is, we feed people who are hungry and help those living homeless make their way back home. Pretty simple, but that's what Food and Shelter does, and they've done it for a long time. In nineteen eighty-three, they were founded by literally distributing meals to hungry people out in the community parks uh, through a startup at McFarland Church. That grew, and by nineteen eighty-seven, they opened the original location at one-oh-four West Comanche in downtown, and that had its growth as well. I remember the College of Architecture worked on that quite substantially at one point. And then in two thousand and seventeen is when it evolved to this location on Reed Avenue through a great support of the community and many people that rallied around it at that time to put it in this location. Why was it put in this location? Well, there was a lot of very good reasons, and they're still there today. This location, of course, is just south of the Griffin Memorial Hospital, which has had a long legacy in our community of treating those with mental illness and many other services as well. So this area is natural for services that are needed for folks in the homeless community that, that have similar needs. And since then or around this time, and, and this has continued to evolve, we now have the County Health Department right by it that relocated from Robinson Street down to just across the field, basically. You see right over here is the County Health Department. We also, also have CCFI that took over an old church on Eufaula, and now is the Boys and Girls Club as well, a very notable organization in our community. And I would also notice that you have the Community Service Building up on, just, just to the northeast of this. So we have a number of services right around this facility that help with this, with this organization and the needs. I would also just note that, then this came about the last time we were here on this item, when it was located here. We formerly had East Main Place, right north of it, was a, was an institution that also helped the homeless population. And they were basically taken away from that location, or that, but location was limited because the building had basically been condemned. It was no longer habitable, and so that building was, was lost, and so this facility went in just south of it. So the proposed location you see right there is immediately right next to it. It is already owned by Food and Shelter. They've owned it since they had this location, and it was always anticipated to be the next phase of growth. Sorry, I hit this too quick, in, in their development. As Ms. Hudson said, the original PUD, and this is zoned as uses for food and shelter, the reason we're here, though, is it was zoned as additional cottages. So it was zoned as additional residential units. Instead, as the services have grown and as the need has been reassessed and envisioned through these recent years, it's been determined that there are other needs. So first, I just want to take you through some of the land use issues. As Ms. Hudson showed you, on the, on the right side of the screen is a vast amount, amount of land that is owned by the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health. You might have noticed or picked up on it when it went through. It was not zoned. It is not actually zoned because it's state land, and they are immune to the zoning. But it is twenty-twenty-five planned. Twenty-twenty-five does show this site and everything around it to the north, south, and east as institutional. And I would suggest to you that institutional very much is in keeping with what is proposed tonight in terms of the services that they want to put on this second phase. So there is the zoning. The zoning, again, is a PUD, and this area around it is not zoned. There is significant amount of flood plain just to the east side of it. We are not developing in the flood plain at all. It just simply is next to us. So there is the site plan in context. You see the cottages just north of us, the main administrative building and kitchen area and dining area. And this is just south of that. It is its own site. There is no vehicular connection. The vehicular connection goes out on Reed Avenue. But it is basically very simplicity, one building, one building, and I'll show you a very preliminary floor plan of what's envisioned here. It is one building, one-story, simple construction to make sure that it, it ties in well with the rest of the facility. And it literally, as Ms. Hudson said, is just a loop parking lot. Uh, one of the reasons we do sort of move close to that north boundary is, of course, architecturally, we have very set dimensions for a parking lot. And this building needs a certain amount of size to it, and then we had to loop around the backside of it. So we're pretty compressed in terms of the, the siding. This is the site plan more formally or dimensionally shown. We do have easements running right down through the center of this. So we're a little bit limited on what we can do in that aspect. We have detention ponds already really in place right here and over here, at least for where the next location will be. That's the simple drawing of the preliminary plat. It is one lot, one block, which is the south portion of this site. And, and that's the green space exhibit. As Ms. Hudson said, there is, you have the large open space on the right side of it and some other open space just to the side of the building to about a forty percent, or forty-three percent green space. This is very preliminary. I don't want you to put a lot of stock into it. And of course, in planning and zoning, we don't really typically concern ourselves with interior floor plans. But this gives you a sense of what is envisioned here. It's basically client choice shopping, it's called. It allows for a grocery store feel. So we have a more, a little bit more abnormality to the experience of obtaining food, which how much more basic can you get in life? But this allows them the opportunity to get more access to the food, different varieties of food, fresh vegetables, fresh fruits in a grocery store environment. And other services as well. You see volunteer meeting space, waiting areas, and offices. This is just a quick, very preliminary image of what it would look like. Basically, one building with gable construction, residential construction, residential feel, and would be right there off Reed Avenue. With that, I'm not the best spokesman, of course, for operations. I think Ms. April Hyple, who is the Executive Director of Food and Shelter, is next gonna come up and explain to you some of the operational aspects and what they really envision from this site in terms of operations. So, April?
Is it okay if I take my mask off while I talk to you?
Go ahead.
Thanks. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you guys tonight and for considering this project that I feel is a great big need for our community, for not just the city of Norman, but greater Cleveland County area. So like you've heard already, this was not our original use for this project. We intended to build more cottages and more cottages straight on into that land. Probably forty more cottages would have come into this space had we continued on with our original project. But since that day, I've learned a lot of new information. And it's not that I don't believe we need housing in Norman. We are working on additional housing in Norman every single day in all kinds of creative ways. And it may very well be that within a year, I'll be back in front of you asking for additional zoning for some additional space on a different plot of land to build housing. But right before we opened that, our main facility at two-one Reed, I got a visit from Katie Fitzgerald, who was the then CEO of the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma, who came to me and said, you know, April, Norman is underperforming in food distribution for hungry families. What that means is based on the number of people we know in this community who are low-income, who are struggling, who are living right on the edge of poverty or right on the edge of homelessness, we're not serving those people. And they, and through their research, they found out that Norman's main sources of food pantries were, were faith community. Not the faith community is the reason they wouldn't go, but they were open on sporadic hours. The first Thursday of the month or the, or a certain other day of the- the first Thursday of the month or a certain other day of the week. And people had trouble following those schedules. And so what they asked us to do was open as a food pantry five to seven days of the week. Now, prior to that moment, Food and Shelter had never been a food pantry and our location at 201 Reed was not designed to be a food pantry. If you've been in that facility at all, you'll know there's just not the space to do it. But when I hear somebody say there are hungry families out there in this community, I'm going to try to find a way to serve them. And so since 2017, we've been operating a food pantry out of a building that wasn't built for it. And as our information got out there that we were allowing people to come in and shop for their own food and pick the things they know they could take home for their family, the numbers started to grow. And we were seeing significant numbers of families coming in who were often having to make the choice between paying their rent and buying food. And so as time went on, we kind of started to realize we needed to build our own food pantry. We needed to build something. I didn't know it would be here. I didn't know what it would look like. But then COVID happened. And if there was ever a light shone on struggling people in this community, it was the COVID pandemic. During the months of April, May, and June of 2020, we saw 500 to 700% increases at our food pantry from day to day. And these are people who had never come to a food pantry before, who said to us, this is a conversation I had with an actual mom here in Norman, I did not know I qualified for a food pantry. I thought they were for really poor people or people who didn't have jobs or people who are homeless. And when she learned that anybody can come to a food pantry, everybody needs food, she started coming regularly. And since then, she's never had to make that choice between paying rent and buying food. She's been able to remain more stably housed. And so as we really just got into the conversations with these families and learned the great number of people in this community that are struggling every single day, that needed us before the pandemic but didn't know they could come until the pandemic hit. And now they're still coming and they keep coming. I got back to the staff at Food and Shelter and I said, you know, we've got to revisit this. And so we visited Food and Resource Centers around the state. There's one in Moore that opened up as a response to one of the more recent tornadoes or one of the most recent devastating tornado in Moore, I should say. And they needed it so much, they kept it open. There's one in Stillwater called Our Daily Bread. We visited there. We visited one at Edmonds. So we started to understand that, obviously, when somebody comes in and says, I can't pay my, I don't have enough money to buy food, that's probably not their only need. And what they really need is somebody to sit down with them and assess their holistic needs and connect them to the multiple resources that could really stabilize them and lift them out of poverty. And that's what a Food and Resource Center is. It is a grocery store. It's a free grocery store where people of all cultures, of all dietary needs, could come in and pick the food they know they're going to feed their family, that their family will eat. But in this location, they're also going to get to sit down with a case manager who can identify housing resources for them. And just in the little bit of time we've been planning this, which really hasn't been a lot of time at all, we've been able to connect with partners who say, yeah, DHS is going to have a staff member present at this location so somebody that's not already accessing their benefits can access them that day. The same for our partners at the Veterans Affairs, Social Services for Veteran Families, the Norman Housing Authority, Social Security Administration, housing resources like what we provide at Food and Shelter, Community Mental Health will have a presence there. All of the resources that people need to avoid homelessness and lift themselves out of poverty will be available to them in one space. And I don't know if you've ever had the experience of navigating those systems, but we make it very difficult to get out of poverty. Not Norman, just our country. It's very difficult to get out of poverty. And if we can make it just a little bit easier for people who need us, I just think this is the right thing to do. What it's not, it's not a homeless shelter. And I know that was listed in our potential uses, but it's not for people who are homeless. It's for people who are housed, who could be going to school with your children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, who are struggling to make ends meet and need a place they can go to ask for help. And what happens now is that they call a number and they get four or five referrals, to which they may hit roadblocks every step of the way. It's not a place, it's not going to bring in more people who are homeless. I don't foresee that at all because, again, there will be no services for individuals who are homeless there. It will address some of the issues we've had at our 201 Reed location by providing additional parking spaces. It'll fill in the field where we've had issues with people trying to camp at and struggled to monitor that after hours. So it's going to take care of some of the issues. There's additional lighting. Like was mentioned, we moved our location to the north side facing the parking lot at the request of Ms. Sanders. And it was a really brilliant idea. We just hadn't thought of it, I guess, because our other location does not like that. But we moved it to the north side, filled that whole part in front of her home and the other neighboring homes with landscaping to just make that a space where people, there's no, people are going to camp out or sit there. So I really believe it's the right thing for Norman. And I've been at Food and Shelter 11 years. I've done this work for 24 years. And this kind of solution, a simple solution, to help people get services in a simple way is the right thing to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, April. So we're happy to answer any questions you have. And there's a number of supporters here. I would just finally close with, you hopefully saw it, but there was a submittal of, in every one of them, but well over 100 supporters signed a petition in support of this from every single ward across our city. That is pretty remarkable. It's rare that we stand in front of you with that much support behind an item, but you have it here tonight. So we're happy to answer any questions you have and we thank you very much for your consideration.
Moving to commission questions for the applicant?
I just want to say, you know, this is one of the bright lights in our community for dealing with not just homelessness, but with hunger. I mean, obviously, the fact that, you know, we look at Norman as being a college community so that there ought to be some money here. But when you have 40 to 50% of the kids in the Norman Public Schools on free or reduced lunch, that says something about the community. And so the fact that you're supporting the community, April, the way you have been, you know, obviously, there's a need. Because I talked to Lee Hall. I live over where that piece of land is in Finley and Apache where people were living. And obviously, we have a need for more housing, but the services that you want to provide here, to me, are important. I just wish you would have left friends in there. Food and Shelter for Friends seems so much more. I know you didn't. Well, I've said this before, but I just have to say it every time because that was what made it friendly. But I'm still happy that this came about and the need is there. And I'm glad we're finding a way to meet the need.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, I just wanted to add for the applicant that if it's not a resource that you've already reached out to Legal Aid Services of Oklahoma has a Norman location and they generally do outreach, so they might be available to provide assistance as well.
Thank you.
I have one other comment. I've worked with the Chickasaw Nation on some of their sites in Purcell and Duncan and Falls Valley. And in the Purcell site, I actually got to develop a nutrition center, which was really good because it was basically the same thing, groceries. But they also had a learning kitchen. Did you think about doing something like that? Or is there, I know we have the Well Center coming in, but could you talk a little bit about that and what your thoughts are on that?
We haven't added a teaching kitchen into this kitchen. It's all, our chef Sunny does nutrition classes and teaches cooking at our main site already. And with us moving pantry over there off of her location, we'll be able to expand that, too. I just wanted to make one final comment. I forgot earlier, if I could. I firmly believe this is a project that will reduce homelessness in Norman, even though it's not intended to serve people who are homeless. We will prevent many, many, many cases of homelessness. And if we can prevent one child from ever experiencing homelessness, I think we should do that. I think that should be our focus. And when we visited the city of Stillwater at Our Daily Bread, they had actual statistical data that showed the number of new cases of homelessness going down since they opened that facility. I believe it's good for Norman.
I have a couple of questions. I'm going to start with the drive that's on the south. It looked like that was a single lane. Is that intended to be only ingress or egress?
Commissioner, it really is to help the sanitation as they come in around the building to come in. Let me go back. Yeah, right in here. It is a single lane and basically to help come back into the sanitation as they pick up sanitation and leave. So it's not really intended to be a main artery of in and out.
So is that specifically going to be marked for ingress only?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And then in the route there, then that will take it back out to Main Street, the garbage truck on the single?
To Reed.
Yeah, it's on, yeah, going forward. Okay.
Yeah, there's no connection to Main Street in this location.
That's right, okay. Then I had a couple other questions. I think some of them are already addressed. It sounded like the parking here would also kind of help offset some of the parking issues that we've seen in the previous building. It looks like there's some staff kind of oriented parking spaces in the back and the main units that are to the north of the building are intended to be visitors of this facility, correct?
Correct, Commissioner. You see on the right side of this screen right here, you see about six spaces on the right. And again, as Ms. Hyple said, the entry point is off the north side and that would be the customer parking lot with handicap spaces right here as well. There's about 28 spaces, which we think is ample and will have some offset effect.
I know that some of the uses aren't totally planned and that floor plan isn't final. What about a drop-in or recreational kind of places for people to be indoors? I know maybe to an aspect of, not exactly a warming shelter, but places that are indoors. I know from reading, there was some concerns about a lot of the residents that are currently at Food and Shelter being outdoors and kind of integrating into some of the private housing units that are nearby. Can you address that?
So there will not be a drop-in center, day shelters slash any of that at this location. We do provide a day shelter that has often extended hours during extreme weather days. So when it's super hot, we might be open until eight o'clock at night. When it's super cold, extra hours. Since the city of Norman has taken over the overnight shelter, we don't offer overnight shelter there anymore, with that one exception of this crazy last zero-degree days we had in February. Regarding your other question, would you mind repeating the other question?
Yeah, I just, I mean, from some of the preliminary meetings and from some of the protest letters we received, we saw a general concern from the neighbors about, I mean, just issues that they've had.
The foot traffic through the neighborhood.
Traffic was a big one, but also in maintenance and for the participants that are coming to Food and Shelter. I know that, you know, additional homeless population is not what you're intending to serve, but I think that they're expressing some concerns about how it's being operated now with those units. And I think that if they were going to ask a question, that would probably be them. So in speaking to those protest letters.
I don't think the concern of the neighbors are regarding who lives in the cottages. And I met, prior to even submitting our application, I hosted several, both one-on-one and group meetings with people who live in the neighborhood, anybody that wanted to come. And their concerns were not with people who live in the cottages. It was the people that come to our day shelter in the daytime and then leave to go back to campsites at night. So they come from downtown park area, maybe Sun Wilderness area, all from that area to Food and Shelter because that's where they get their meals and shower and access case management staff. And then when we close, whatever time we close, depending on, like I said, the weather, they go back out from where they came or to another location or to Salvation Army to eat dinner. And I think that's where the areas of concern that they've expressed to me are. This is not going to draw more people like that in or solve that problem. And we visited in the multiple meetings we've had with neighbors. We visited, we brought in Norman Police Department to have conversations about what can be done. And the foot traffic will be there. People have to walk to get, or bike to get to where they need to go. We've addressed, you know, like how to keep neighbors safe, you know. But I don't think this is going to solve that problem. It's just two different things.
There were also some concerns about the drainage. I don't know if you want to just briefly talk about the engineering on drainage and stormwater, the floodplain, how water gets out of this property. I know that that was a concern some neighbors had, so.
Chris Anderson, Commissioners, for SMC Consulting.
Good evening, Chris Anderson, SMC Engineering. Yes, the majority of this particular site will drain back to the east. There's an existing detention pond that was constructed with Phase 1, anticipating that this site would be developed. And again, most of this site will drain back to the east to that pond and then it discharges into the floodplain to the east.
So, I mean, do you anticipate, I mean, I know you do some casework on these, but is there going to be any negative or maybe improved benefit to the drainage, to the surrounding properties?
I don't think that will be improved, but there won't be any harm from it.
Let me just add to that, Commissioner, if you will. Just as we see right here, you can see the floodplain is to the right. The floodplain and the floodway is the blue. And so the drainage, as Chris said, basically goes to the right. And it first goes into that detention basin on the right side of the property. So if that helps you orient your vision.
Okay, all right. And then I think that's most of my questions and I know we'll probably have some more. I did want to just add a couple of comments on there, too. I have been to the Regional Food Bank in Moore and I think it is a wonderful facility. It really does provide a type of environment that can be very uplifting and not demeaning to the type of people that come for services to give a more natural shopping experience. And I don't think that that's necessarily always going to be hand in hand with necessarily a homeless population. So I do believe when April was describing that, that those are true statements. In particular, part of why the Regional Food Bank in Moore has been so successful is because of the casework that they do. Many of the people that come to that food bank typically in a few months no longer need to use the food bank because they got casework to help them with utility bills that are outstanding, other reasons that made food expensive for them. So the importance of casework is always going to be very important. We have a lot of great organizations in Norman that do that casework, but those are the types of things that help solve the problem rather than put a Band-Aid on it. So I am very encouraged by the fact that casework would be going in to help, you know, uplift these people in a more lasting way. Those were my comments. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Okay, we have, going to that, some audience comments. If you've not already filled out a sheet, there are usually some in the back over there. As I, I'm going to call the names for the ones that I do have here already. Everyone will be allowed three minutes to speak. If you would like a 30-second warning, please let me know when you start. Otherwise, I will yield the floor to you for your full time. And when you begin, please say your full name and your address. So I'm going to start with Sue Sanders.
I'd like to have the 30-minute thing. My name is Susan A. Sanders. I bought my house at 148 Reed Avenue 27 years ago. I thought it was a great neighborhood for bringing my kids up. And three years ago, more or less, we had a meeting like this. I've heard people go on and, well, in that meeting, we were going on and saying it was like just hosting Boy Scouts in our backyard and that would benefit us. I do believe people are being benefited by these projects, but it does have a big impact on my neighborhood. I've had verbal harassment to visitors, my daughters, and myself. My car's storage sheds have been stolen from and vandalized. My daughter that lives here is scared to go from house to car. I'm nervous about gardening in the front yard because there's normally an audience of people across the street. Recently, my daughter and I laid down on a carpet during gunshots, which are not uncommon. This is after hours, not when, you know, the Food and Shelter people are there. And there's yelling, arguments, physical fights. And the worst I've seen was a man in a wheelchair assaulted with a crowbar. I've spoken to police on many times because I've made calls. And me and other people on my block have talked to them. I've been told many times that they feel the additional stress from the building here, Food and Shelter. They didn't have enough staff to deal with these situations. They said it attracted homeless from out of state and is a homeless hub of Oklahoma. And people are migrating here from other states. They also said people were brought here in vehicles, but they said that they would feel safer working in South Oklahoma than here. By the population... working in South Oklahomahood than here. Um, why the population, uh, as there is many homeless already, they put a screen on the police-
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Okay. I'm worrying that this population might be extra stressed. I'd like to see this place on the top of Reed, next to Main. There's access to buses. It's at the top of the floodplain, and it's, uh, there's many people in wheelchairs that, that need to just use that crosswalk. Um, and municipal funds would be saved on not helping putting dirt down towards the-
Ms. Sanders, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to move next to Hugh Brown. And again, if you'd like the warning, let me know. Otherwise, I'll yield to you for the full time.
Yeah, go ahead and put it on time.
And just say your name and your address, please.
Yes, my name is Hugh Brown. I live at 907 East Ufala. Um, I want to start off with, uh, thanking you for letting us be here. First, on my mind is, uh, as I was listening to your, uh, comments, that, uh, there is a sewer system that is behind that area where they're talking about there. It's a sewer tank just back there. And I don't know what they're going to do with that. Is that what you were talking about earlier?
We were talking about the storm drainage.
Yeah, the drainage in the back. You know, they're going to have to do something with that. That's going to cause a problem with us. My main concern here is lighting. Our streets are very dark. What we have now is inadequate. The second part to that is our alleyways. The alleyways are used constantly going through. At times, people try to go in and hide in the bushes and stuff. There's tree limbs or some of the neighbors have their trees hanging over their fence. And the, certain areas back behind my house, there's an alleyway that you can barely see down it because of all the, uh, weeds that are up in the ground and the trees hanging over. And lighting in our alleyway would help. Lighting on our streets would help. And concern about our traffic, yeah, we're going to have a lot of traffic. I understand that. Right now, when certain days of the week, I believe it is, we have, um, cars on Reed that are lined up and there's only one lane to get down it. This parking that you're talking about putting in will probably limit that, limit that. I think that putting it on the south side personally, I think would be a wrong thing because you're, you're going to have more foot traffic, you're going to have more car traffic. Putting it on the north side, which you still have a building showing up there, is no longer there. Uh, having it on the north side of, of Reed and Main, less traffic for us on Reed, on Reed Street and on Ufala. And it would give us a chance to, uh, people to just be able to go in. I understand you want to put it there because it's kind of a hideaway from everything. And it doesn't help us for our foot traffic and for our, uh, car traffic. Uh, I would even suggest it on Ufala that you put a, um, at least a bump, a hump on the street to slow cars down. Because we've had cars take off from the stop sign and race to the other stop sign. And of course, it deadens at the end on Reed. I would like to see that happen. The main thing I'm looking for is giving us adequate lighting in our alleyway and on the streets.
Mr. Brown, thank you so much for your comments. That's your time.
Thank you.
Uh, we received another comment here. The item number was not listed for Chris Soot. If this is for this item, would you please come forward? Again, just say your name and your address. If you need to move the mic forward, you can. And if you'd like the warning, let me know. Otherwise, you'll have the full time.
I would. Thank you. I'm Chris Soot. I live at 715 West Sims. I'm here because I have recently been volunteering at Food and Shelter, at the Food Pantry. And my observations are from listening to staff and observing what happens, um, with the distribution of food. Um, there's so little space. I don't know if you've been in that facility and looked at this space carefully, but there's just so little space. It's, it's, the distribution point is in a corner of the dining facility. Um, but more importantly, the, the storage for food, especially refrigerated food, is just inadequate to, to the point that staff have to turn down donations. And you can imagine how frustrating that is. They live on donations. And when they have to turn down donations because they don't have space, it's, it's discouraging. Uh, the last thing I would say is this is a matter of, April described facilities in Stillwater and Moore, and this is a matter of pride. People who come here have their pride. And if we can provide a facility where they can shop as if they were in a grocery store, you can imagine how much that does for their pride. So for a number of reasons, this facility is really needed in Norman. It's really important, and I thank you for giving it consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'd open to Planning Commission discussion.
Uh, I have a question. And I guess, uh, a couple people have said something about the corner there where, um, the old dorms were at Main and Reed. Do you guys own that land? You don't own that land? Okay, that answers the question.
And I believe that East Main Place was an entirely different organization.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, I know. Yeah, I know that. But I'm just-
See where you're going.
Because actually, I like the idea of, of working off that corner, but if you don't own the land, you can't work off that corner.
And I can just tell you, Commissioner, the Oklahoma State Department of Health, uh, state agency owns that land, all of that land. In fact, really even the land where those buildings are, Dimensions Academy, Norman Public Schools, all of that is Oklahoma State Department of Health.
Any other commission discussion? All right, I'd take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried six to zero.
Okay, moving to Jeffrey Ars PUD, uh, items 12 and 13, which I will read together. Item 12 is R2122-21. Jeffrey Ars requests amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from Country Residential Designation to Mixed Use Designation for approximately five acres of property located at 3766 East Robinson Street. Item 13 O-2122-10, Jeffrey Ars requests rezoning from A2 Rural Agricultural District to PUD Planned Unit Development for approximately 5.0 acres of property located at 3766 East Robinson Street. And take the staff presentation.
Hi, Laura Hoggett with the Planning Department. So we have an application from Jeffrey R.C. for, um, a 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan Amendment from Country Residential, um, to mixed use. Oh, um, so currently, right now, it's country residential, surrounded by country residential, um, and then there's some floodplain where the dark green is. And they're requesting mixed use designation. Sorry, I was kind of jumping. Um, they're also requesting a rezoning from A2 Rural Agricultural to PUD. Um, they would like to request the PUD for, um, some different uses. They're like used or unused vehicle sales, vehicle parts and accessory sales, um, residential uses, and then, um, pretty much every use that's allowed by right in A2 is also listed in their narrative. So, um, to the north of the subject tract is RE, and it's mostly surrounded by A2. There are a couple of PUDs to the east. Um, and they're pretty much surrounded by, um, other residential uses. Um, there is an eating disorder treatment facility to the east. Sorry, it's hopping. Uh, here's an aerial of the property. There's, um, a house existing now. It's looking across Robinson. So it's hard, kind of hard to take pictures because there's a hill, so they're, they're not great. Um, this is on Bryant Circle, looking at the property. So looking south. That's the house that's existing. Whoop. Sorry, the, an aerial of the property. And this is the proposed site plan. They're proposing, um, sorry if the mouse will go. A house here, or, no, sorry, this is the shop for the, um, cars, car sales and the parts sales, a future single-family dwelling unit. So they would be removing the buildings that exist now, um, with some storage space back here, parking in the rear, and then the drive that goes out to Robinson. They'll have just this one access point. Um, and there is some floodplain on the south part of the lot. There's nothing proposed in there now, but if they wanted to have a fence or something, they would have to go through the, uh, floodplain permit committee. And then we did get two protest letters, which accounted for 6.93% of the notification area. All right, so, um, I'm available for questions, and the applicant is here with her presentation as well.
Thank you, Laura. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, we take the applicant presentation.
Hello. Um, I'm Jeffrey R.C. 3766 is my property. Um, currently, it's a, just a rental house with the shop quarters on it. Um, what I've, I came here at the, I don't know if y'all remember, is, is a few months ago, um, wanting to do, you know, kind of a zone it for a lot of different uses. Uh, since I got with Mr. Nash, he's no longer on the board, but, um, he advised that I just do just the vehicle and part sales. Um, so that's, that's the only change in the, the use, um, compared to how it is now. It's, we just copy, all the residential stuff is copied directly from A2. Um, it's a, it's, it's, and it's power sports, not, um, like, uh, cars. It's just, uh, like dirt bikes, four-wheelers, things like that. Um, uh, it's a small, I'm the only employee. I run it myself. We are building, we're going to build our, our residence out there next year, hopefully, um, and just live out there. And, and I just want to run it, you know, from my house. It's, it's just me. I'll be the only one running it. I think we got a, there we are. Oh, okay. Yeah, so you can see the, the future location of the dwelling unit. Um, the, there's a trailer house behind there now. Uh, we've got some renters in there. They kind of, they're not the most organized. They've got, you know, kind of junk around there everywhere. And so we, we really want to clean the property up, uh, make it, i- it's really going to be like, I don't know, kind of doctor's office feeling. I mean, the, the only thing not residential about it would be a sign, um, which is just going to be, I believe that's actually going to be eight by, the four by eight, it'll be a little smaller than that. It, to, we have office sign standards on that. So it'll be, um, I think, uh, a little smaller than a four by eight sign. Um, the, we're going to add a concrete approach directly in the middle. The, uh, the two driveways there now, one was original, um, and then another trail was kind of formed, and we want to eliminate both those, have a nice concrete one coming down the middle. Um, yeah, really the only changes is just adding a sign out there. It's a, I mean, it's a home occupation business. I just want to do my diligence and, and make sure everything's owned correctly. Um, and then we did, one of the protests was, um, about, you know, concerns that it was like a salvaged yard. And so I did put together this, um, to, to address that. The, the parts I'm selling are all brand new or at least remanufactured from a manufacturer. And any of the parts that do come, um, to the property are warehoused inside that shop. Most of them are actually just drop shipped, and I do a lot of, like, online sales, so. Um, and then those are examples of the vehicles that would, uh, be out front in this, it'd be recessed down on the north side of that shop parking area, kind of in the same, um, section there is now. Currently, I have a lot of, um, vehicles down around here, kind of scattered out. Um, that's, we want to, you know, make this a nice little area to, to park them and, and kind of tuck them behind here because our neighbors to the, uh, west can kind of see it from their yard. It's, you know, it does kind of look a little salvage-y currently. So, um, yeah, if this, if we can move forward with this plan, it will definitely clean the property up a lot. And, um, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you. Uh, any questions of the applicant? I actually have a question for staff I failed to ask previously. There are some PUDs to the south here, which I believe are for residential use over there. I just wanted to confirm that because they were marked as PUD, that those did not have a commercial use on there?
Uh, the PUDs to the east of this, uh, proposed, uh, request, there is, uh, there's two actually. Um, one, uh, which takes up, uh, three of the lots that are, um, to the east. And what that was previously, that was a wedding venue. The, uh, previous owner's, uh, health, uh, was failing, and so they sold that. And that is actually a residential treatment facility for those suffering from, um, eating disorders. And they are housed in that, uh, residential structure that is there. And they're, um, they're very limited in activity. I mean, it's not something that they go outside. I mean, their time is monitored very closely. Then there's another PUD to the east, and all that is, is it's left over from the previous PUD. That was the, uh, wedding venue. Uh, the current owner of the area, Dr. Sears, who put the, um, eating disorder facility in, did not need that additional, um, piece for the PUD, so they did not buy that. So it's, it's vacant property right now.
Thank you. And, uh, then applicant may be able to answer this part. There was a note about on this, that on the site plan here, these gravel driveways that it looked like are proposed, and one of them appears to be on the adjacent property to the east. I apologize, I said south earlier. It was directionally challenged, but it looks like it's to the east. Is there an access agreement for that, or how does that pertain to this property?
Um, we, we made an agreement with the, um, owner of the property to the right to separate that. And, because currently, there's a shared driveway. So that will be added in, um, as part of the agreement to move that driveway.
Okay, so, all right, thank you. So there won't be, just to clarify, any more connection between that property to the east and your prop-
No, yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jablonski, I have a question for the applicant. Um, in here in the parking, it does say that you plan on having gravel parking spots, but this is not in line with the, the city zoning ordinance. Can I ask why, why you want to have gravel?
Um, just cost. I mean, like I said, it's a, it's a, uh, single, I'm the only one running it. The, the amount of foot traffic and customers that act- The amount of foot traffic and customers that actually come to this, come there would be, you know, few and far between. Plenty of days where there'll be no one there.
Bird, I know we looked at this item before in a variation of it in May, I believe. There were some concerns at that time, and I want to just reiterate them again, since we're considering the item again. One of the main concerns was of noise for test driving for facilities and for the sale, even if it's just for repairs, that those would require a test drive. It did look like there was already some dirt ramps up there. How much use of these ATVs and vehicles is being done that might cause noise, or can you address that concern?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I've, I've ridden, I've ridden ATVs out, out in this area for about 20 years. It's like, you know, just riding ATVs around rural private-owned land is nothing uncommon around there. There's actually a real track, a few properties south. The dirt mounds are actually, I, I put those up because I clear, there's kind of a hill right here. There's already like a mound of dirt that comes through the property. And I, all I did was cut out that area where the driveway will be and just moved the dirt to the side. And so there were, that's what, that's why there were dirt mounds there. There will be no test driving of the vehicles by the customers, so.
And again, this, Bird, just to reiterate some other items that came up of how, what the quantity of inventory is, what any visualization would be from the street. I know you had previously described that the property does slope down as you go back, and there would be nothing seen from the road. There was a request for some fencing, something to block that. So I know there were some concerns about what vehicles could be seen by any of the other surrounding properties, and how many vehicles, and how many of them are still planned? At one point, you had said 80% jet skis, if that was still part of that plan.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say it'll probably, it'll even out, and it's a seasonal thing too. Depends on marketing. Ideally, I'd like it to be a blend of, of all of them. We've just, that was, the way, that was kind of my initial plan, was mostly jet skis. Because I can buy them cheaper in the winter and sell them in the summer, there's more of a market fluctuation there. I would, I would say in the near distant future, it, it may go down to like 60 or 70% jet skis. Definitely be a majority still. However, there's, there should, it should never exceed 20. And I mean, we're, that would be, and that's in total of dirt bikes, four-wheelers, jet skis. I don't have the capital to be able to do that. I could, I, I think a reasonable amount of vehicles I would have for sale at one time would be, you know, five or six. Like I said, it's, it's only me working this thing, so.
And regarding any kind of fencing along the front?
So I moved the, the display and kind of parking are to the east of that shop building. What that does is block out everything. Anything parked to the east of that, you can't see from, you know, the, the west, where everyone can, where you can see from the road, and where you can see from adjacent properties. The property to the, to the east, that there's so much forestry and, and brush that you can't really see. It, it's also vacant, by the way, but even if someone did build a property on it, you wouldn't be able to see it, obviously anyways. And I intentionally wanted to, made the fencing actually like a residential requirement, which I don't think there's many. But, you know, I, I wouldn't want to, and I don't think the neighbors would either want to put an industrial like vision-blocking fence up alongside of the property. I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be too appealing.
And then I have one more question regarding the future location of the single-family dwelling unit, which was marked as, it looks like 8,000 square feet, which is a little bit bigger than what a typical single-family residence would be. And this might be, again, a city question, I apologize for taking it out of order. But what kind of restrictions would this PUD and its current writing make that that could not also be used for the commercial purposes?
Designation on the site plan has that as a future single-family dwelling unit. So if he wanted to turn that into another commercial use, he would have to come back and amend the PUD.
Thank you.
I also want to add, I, I did recently actually start designing the house, and it's at 75 by 40 square feet. So that was just me. Big dreams, I guess.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just one more question. Do you anticipate displaying your, the autos or whatever trying to sell towards the road, or is that going to be?
No, I don't, I don't need to. Just right there, right in front of the shop.
So there's, there's not going to be like a sales lot up front?
No, the only thing you'll be able to see from the road is that sign.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant by commission? I'm not seeing any, and I do not have any slips for protests for this item, or comments, sorry, on this item. Does any member of the audience wish to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, we could move to planning commission discussion. I just want to add that one of the main comments we had when Mr. R.C., and I apologize that I pronounced your name wrong before. Do the best I can. When this came before, one of the comments we had that it did, your business plan didn't seem very solid or well-thought-out. So I do think that this was a much more well-thought-out plan that you've presented to us. There, it was more thoughtful, a little bit more planning went into it, and this feels a little bit more of a professional approach to what you were aiming for, so.
Commissioner Jablonski, I have a comment. I agree that the business plan is much more streamlined, but I'm looking at the uses listed in the PUD, and they're quite extensive, including short-term rentals. And so this is a concern for me that if, if the goal is to keep traffic low, short-term rentals might, might not keep traffic low. And, and really, just, you know, looking at this list, you know, of items four, four through 13, goes well beyond what the presentation.
Those are all copied from the existing zoning, so that's, that's what's currently allowed. The only thing additional is all the vehicle stuff, like the first few lines of vehicle. Everything else is just directly the same as what it already is.
Is there any other discussion items? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried five to two, or four to two.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to our next item, the Sienna Springs PUD. Two items on here, item 14 and 15. Item 14 is O-2122-13, Sky Ridge Homes, Inc. Request amendment of the existing PUD planning unit development. O-0607-9 for approximately 24.8 acres of property generally located a quarter-mile west of 36th Avenue Southeast and a quarter-mile north of East Lindsay Street. Item 15, PP-2122-4, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Sky Ridge Homes, Inc. Grubbs Consulting LLC for Sienna Springs addition, Section 2, a planned unit development for 24.8 acres of property generally located a quarter-mile west of 36th Avenue Southeast and a quarter-mile north of East Lindsay Street. And the staff presentation, please.
Hi, Laura Hoggitt. Alright, we have an application from Sky Ridge Homes, Inc. for an amendment to their PUD. And they're pretty, really just changing the site development plan and updating some area regulations. And they added a rear setback that was missing from the original, and then they also added a coverage requirement for impervious coverage at 65%. And then there's also an application for a preliminary plat for Sienna Springs addition, Section 2. So it is currently zoned PUD, they're just amending a few things. There's R1 to the north and to the west with A2 and RE on the other sides. So this land is currently vacant, and it is surrounded by a single family. Here's an aerial showing the vacant land. Here we have the preliminary plat. And there are three access points, one for the existing drive that's in Phase 1, and then they're connecting to Summit Valley to the west with two access points. There's our site development plan. And we have their open space exhibit, so it's pretty much surrounding the lake pond that's in the middle. Sorry, going backwards. And we did receive some protests. We're at 20.9% of the notification area. And just to note, this will be the same number of lots that were previously preliminary-platted. They're just changing the street layout. And I'm available for questions, and I believe the applicant has a presentation as well.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, could you explain again, what is the difference between the original and then this?
So the original did not have a rear setback in the, I'm trying to remember what the name of the section is. I know it's Section 15, I can't remember the name of it. So they just added what's typical in R1, which is 20 feet, or 20% of the lot. I think whichever one's smaller. And then they added a coverage requirement of 65% for total impervious coverage. That wasn't in the original either.
And those are the only two changes from the original, correct?
Um, I think they also changed like some of the exhibit letters, but other than that, that's all I can think of, so.
Any other? Oh, sorry.
In the original, all the detention and runoff and all those calculations were done and approved as far as by the city staff, in terms of before and after runoff, that's already been considered?
I'll let Public Works speak to that.
Hello, I'm Todd McClellan, the development engineer. Yes, they did do, originally, I think it was in 2006, there was drainage calculations done. This applicant re-looked at it and reevaluated it and came to the same conclusions, although they are adding a 18-inch RCP at the outlet structure, so that's the only change.
What does that do?
What's that?
What does that do?
It helps with the runoff at the higher-end storms.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I take the applicant presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Sean Rieger, representing the applicant in this case. And as Laura said, this is really actually a very minor change, but I will show you exactly what is changed. And she showed you the aerial there, this is an extension of, of Sienna Springs, Section 1, down to the south, that then curves around the top. I'll just move right in, she showed you the aerial there. This is the new layout, and it's important for you to understand that when we have a PUD, a PUD is site plan-specific. So then, when somebody comes back with a different site plan, we have to amend the PUD. Even though the written verbiage of the PUD, such as the uses, all of the qualifiers of stormwater, all of that are the same, exactly the same. If we change the site plan, we have to come back for amended PUD because the site plan is different. And I'm going to show you exactly what changed in that respect. So this is the new plan. As Laura said, you see the access point right here and down here, those are the same as it was in the last one. I'm going to move quickly, oops, sorry, this pointer tonight is moving quick. And actually, Laura said the same lot count. The decision was made earlier on, we're not changing the lot count, we're not changing the minimum lot size. All of that is the same in the PUD, so no change on any of that. That's the preliminary plat. Open space is the same, we're not changing the open space at all. Nobody is encroaching any further into that open space around the lake. That exhibit, I apologize, is showing the old layout, but the open space is the same. So the open space has not changed. And just a summary of the changes, I'm going to show you side-by-side comparison in just a moment. But the only changes from that PUD, and it was an extensive PUD back in 2010, 2006, when it was adopted. It's one of the more extensive PUDs that, that we've seen come through. But it is all left intact under this zoning change. The only change is the street layout and the same area regulations, height setbacks, all of that, except for basically two things, a rear yard setback is now in place. And this was actually something that staff caught, and we appreciated it, and that the original PUD, for whatever reason, did not have any rear yard setback expressed in it. So there was nothing in the PUD to delineate that, so this now puts it in and sets it. And then the impervious coverage maximum. Back in 2006, I could tell you, this wasn't really on our radar screen as much. Stormwater master plan got adopted in around 2006, but we're much more diligent nowadays about setting the, the maximum impervious numbers, so this PUD did not have that in that. R1 zoning in City of Norman has a maximum impervious of 65%. So now this sets that at the same maximum impervious as R1 throughout the city, so defines that. Lot sizes are the same, same number of lots, same square footage of lot, no changes in that. So here is the side-by-side, so this is in the, on the left side is 2006. That was adopted with the PUD, and again, that carries with the PUD. So to do a different layout on the right means we have to amend the PUD to allow for the different layout. You can see basically the top part of these PUDs are the same, exactly the same. In fact, I could tell you, I should have showed you earlier, but there is already a water line built on that street layout. So the water line utility is already in place. The only change then is this area right down here. And you see formerly it was three cul-de-sacs and one street. Now it is just a loop street, basically. The edge is the same, the edge is no change. Again, the number of lots are the same, it is just a different arrangement, basically. The other thing that is only very slightly changed, Mr. Beck, you asked about stormwater. This one has, this PUD had pretty extensive requirements in it as to stormwater and filtration, and basically some zones where the water would be carried through before it got to the pond. This keeps that intact, it only very slightly changes them. You see on the left is where those, those swales, they're called in the PUD swales, which are basically a filtration area more or less, carries through. You could see them right here, right here, right here, right, the, the five circles. On the right is where they are shown now, so very slight changes in that just because on the left side here, the lot, the lot locations changed. So that is basically it. The staff reports again are, reckon, recognize that, that the amendments are original, same as the original PUD. In fact, the document is virtually exactly the same, except for those very few minor changes of the rear yard setback and the maximum impervious. Public infrastructure is all there, there's no change to 2025, same allowable uses, slight PUD amendment for rear yard setback and impervious coverage, and that's it. So I hope that answers your question. The engineer is here tonight, if you wish to ask him any questions, and we're happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rieger. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. A while back, we had, the landmark developers came in, present their new subdivision up there on Tecumseh Road and 12. And I asked the question about would they be willing to look at developing accessible or visitable houses in that neighborhood? And so I'm asking the same question to this developer here.
Yeah.
Obviously, I don't know if anybody's seen it, but I've worked with Ideal Homes, and now they're working with me and looking at developing in their tract home areas accessible houses. And that's been my push, is we don't have enough in, in Norman. And I can't make that the reason I vote or not vote for this, because the engineering on this looks good. But that's the only thing I'd like to bring up.
I appreciate that, and if, if you'll allow me, I will simply carry that to the developer and make that recommendation or, or consideration of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Jablonski, I appreciate the developer, you know, being environmentally sensitive, you know, in terms of cleaning up and slowing down the water as it goes into the, to the stormwater retention ponds. One thing that seemed to be missing was any commentary on the trees. I live in Summit Lakes, which butts up- I live in Summit Lakes, which butts up to the north side of this. And right now it's a forested area. Um, and since the PUD is the zoning, you know, I would prefer to see something about how the developer is going to work around the existing landscape and keep as much of the trees as possible. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it did say in here that the, the plan was to maintain the topography as much as possible, uh, to help with stormwater runoff. And if that's the case, then, you know, really they should be trying to maximize the amount of trees that they keep on the land.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, and, uh, if the engineer wants to come up and discuss that a little more at length, I would first just say that really is, when we talk about stream plan quarters, we always talk about a buffer zone between the water and the area of drain off. This is basically what this green space does and protect a buffer zone around the lake. This is Mark Grubbs, civil engineer that did this project, so I want to make sure he has the expertise to give.
Were you addressing me on that? The trees, the stormwater, basically.
He was just asking. I think the point is.
He was asking about trees.
Yeah, yeah. And stormwater, I would realize, I would ask you to consider that when we do stormwater topography on these additions, it requires tree removal to do that.
I do have a question about stormwater, though. Um, I, when I was reading over the, the PUD, I was pretty disturbed to see that, uh, another HOA is going to be asked to maintain city infrastructure, which is what the stormwater retention ponds are. I live in Summit Lakes and it's been a nightmare, uh, for several years. Uh, you know, we, we have, we have retention ponds. Several years ago, the city widened Alameda and the state came in and reclassified our dam as a high hazard dam. And so what this meant was we now have to do a really expensive mitigation and we've been negotiating with the city to take over the infrastructure for, I see John Drayton in the audience, uh, who's part of our HOA, I don't even know, five plus years. And so seeing a PUD that, that puts this on the back of an HOA is concerning, especially if, uh, if they, if they widen any other streets, are these dams going to be reclassified as high hazard dams?
There's a lot to address there. I was involved with the Summit Lakes, uh, Ms. Mukla, the city attorney as well, uh, was involved with that. I think actually very close to resolution, I'm excited to say that. High hazard dams are a special issue in terms of OWRB, State Regulatory Board of Water. Uh, it's a, it's a unique animal when you get into that situation. Uh, as to HOAs, though, I, I would ask you to realize that your ordinances have a stamp that puts it on every plat. Every single plat that runs through every development in the city of Norman has a stamp by law that we're required to put on it that says the POA and the Homeland Association will take care of all of those stormwater controls. That's how it's set up and that's how it's been arranged for a long time.
Well, that's a whole other conversation we need to have here because having been on the planning commission and seeing this, we've got some issues with, with HOAs that need to be addressed sometime. I know it's not here, but that's a problem.
I, I would not disagree with you, Commissioner, in that there is an issue there. But I would totally agree with you that that is a broad discussion that has come out in multiple stormwater votes. In fact, the two stormwater utility votes, that was front and center in those votes as to whether the funding for stormwater should take over those detention ponds. In fact, that was a major issue in those stormwater votes because of neighborhoods like Summit Lakes. To your point, those neighbors are being assessed, whereas the stormwater utility could have potentially stepped in and resolved some of that. But it takes, uh, a significant discussion as to how you do that. And right now, the framework of the city is set up that we follow and it's that stamp. I could show it to you, we've shown it to you before, but it basically says, it's a little about three by five stamp on every plat that gets filed a record that says the POA is responsible for all of those issues. Second thing I would follow up on, this one does have very extensive, uh, stormwater controls in it, more so than any other PUD. So I think this one has the benefit of that.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to audience comments. I do have some comment cards. If anybody has not already filled out one of these slips, the slips are in the back there. If you will write your name in, I'm going to call up the ones that are on here. When you come to the microphone at the front, please state your name and your address. You will be allowed three minutes to speak. If you want the reminder for the thirty seconds before your time's up, let me know at the beginning. So Dr. Michael, I have a Dr. Michael here. Moving on to Janie Avi. Would anybody else like to make a comment on this item? Great, thank you. Uh, moving to planning commission discussion.
Um, yeah, Commissioner Beck, um, I've got some friends that live in that wonderful ironic community of Summit Valley, which is not far from here, and I wonder how you come up with a Summit Valley. Um, but I've noticed lots of cleared land in that area. And I, I remember, and this, I guess I'm rambling a little bit, but I've seen numerous places where developers, before we had the tree ordinance, went in and cleaned all the trees off their land be- before they had, were subject to having to keep the trees. And I'm glad you brought that up. Um, that's not pertinent here, but again, that's another conversation because, um, you made the comment that in order to do runoff and stormwater control, you have to basically take the trees out. But this is a tree community. Um, I, I can't, I don't have any problems with this project, but I thought, well, I had a chance. I'd say we need to have some discussions here at the city level and, uh, about trees and about drainage. And I guess that takes us back to the stormwater issues because we've got those problems, but detention. Um, and, uh, I know that all our developments are done to supposedly not increase runoff, but we can tell by various issues with drainage and stormwater that we have around town. As development happens, we have problems and hopefully the citizens will be smart enough to vote for, uh, the kind of funding that we need to actually take care of those issues. But I, I support this project.
Any other commission discussion?
Uh, yeah, I'll, Commissioner Jablonski again. Um, in broad strokes, I do support the project, but, um, on the other side of Summit Lakes, they added on to, to Summit Lakes, maybe a quarter mile from where this is being developed. It was a forested area and they just clear cut it. And, and the shame is that the PUD is the zoning ordinance. And so, you know, I think if we value trees, then we need to see PUDs that are going to say, we will work around the existing, uh, forested areas and try and maintain X percent. Or they should say, well, you know, in our residential zoning, they will talk about how many trees need to be on the property, but it's better to leave those trees if we can. And so I think that's, I mean, overall, I like this project, but I do think that's a glaring omission.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a vote, or a motion, I'm sorry, for a vote.
So move, second.
And now a vote.
You may vote. And the motion carried five to one.
Moving to next item CCPUD, item sixteen oh dash two one two two dash eight. Jim Holmes Investments LLC requests rezoning from CCFBC Urban General Frontage to CCPUD Center City Planned Unit Development for approximately zero point two two acres of property located at four five three West Gray Street. And I will take the staff presentation.
Thank you, Anna Eastar with the, the Planning Department. And let me get myself oriented here a little bit. Oh, 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 sorry. It's always backwards to me. Here we go. Um, this is a rezoning from Center City Form-Based Code Urban General Frontage to a Center City PUD Planned Unit Development, uh, for four fifty-three West Gray Street. Um, ah, it does stick. I was warned that that might stick a little bit. Um, the, uh, again, they're, they're asking to, uh, rezone from a Center City Planned Unit Development. I'm sorry, from Center City Form-Based Code Urban General Frontage to Center City PUD. Um, this is the track here at four fifty-three West Gray Street. Um, and the existing zoning, uh, to the north is single-family residential. To, uh, the, uh, west and the east and the south, it is, uh, some general commercial, um, developments. And let me see if I can make this work. Ah. Um, the, this is a, uh, existing land use and, and again, it's, uh, uh, commercial, um, uh, on this site and in as well as to the west and the, and the south and the east. And let me see. Here's an aerial photograph. Um, the, uh, I wanted to also mention that the land use plan designation for this area is floodway. And this is looking to the, um, east, out in front of this property, uh, down East Gray. And here's to the south, this is the backside of Sprouts. And to the, uh, west towards Flood Street. Okay, and let me just, let me just back up. And so, uh, they are seeking a CCPUD in order to utilize the CCFBC uses, which allow for medical marijuana dispensary and tier one and tier two, uh, processing, without complying with the form standards that are required in this Center City Form-Based Code because they wish to use the existing building and not redevelop the site. Um, they are requesting also in their, um, PUD, their CCPUD, to maintain their signs, um, such as these. Um, their uses proposed are medical marijuana, tier one and two, uh, office uses, uh, retail and general commercial uses, uh, bar, lounge, tavern kind of use or restaurant. Uh, all of these uses are, are currently allowed. Again, it is the form that they're wishing to, uh, be relieved from, um, not having to meet the form. Um, the access for this site will remain the same, uh, as will the building height. Uh, if the property is to be develop- redeveloped, it will meet the Center City Form-Based Code for height and elements, uh, parking, landscaping, open, and open area. Um, and again, if any new signage is proposed, uh, it will comply with the Center City Form-Based Code. Uh, staff did receive one, um, protest letter and that will be, it comprises point seven two percent of, um, the area. And, uh, with that, I think that, yes, all of the slides I have. And with that, uh, staff forwards, uh, this request, uh, for, uh, an ordinance number zero twenty-one twenty-two dash eight for your consideration. And with that, I would take any questions that you might have.
I have a question.
Yes.
Would this be the closest dispensary to Norman High School? I mean, you're only three blocks away here.
Yes, it probably is. I don't believe there's any, I, I did look at the dispensaries this afternoon and, um, obviously there's none, um, between like Flood and, and twenty-four.
What's the distance, is there a distance?
Yes, it's a thousand feet. Um, and I think a thousand would be more like closer to Flood Street before you got to that thousand. It's a thousand feet from an entrance, I believe, of the school. So it's, it's further than you, than you think.
And how, Jane, do you know how many dispensaries we already have in Norman?
We actually, uh, looked that up today. Did you bring that sheet?
Yes, I did.
I believe we have fifty-six or fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, I think is what we came up with.
Okay.
I think we still have more law offices.
We did not count law offices. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions for staff?
Um, oh, yeah, I had, I was, uh, Anna East, I wasn't quite sure. I heard dispensary and then I heard processing.
Yes, they want to use, uh, medical marijuana dispensary and in tier one and tier two processing.
Which is what?
Pre-rolls and edibles.
They're making them there?
Yes, is that correct? I'm still a little, yeah.
We might, uh, the applicant might be able to better explain to you.
I mean, that's what is allowed in, in tier one, tier two. I don't, I'm, yes, the applicant can, can state what they're doing, but that's what's allowed in tier one, tier two.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I take the applicant presentation.
Hi, good evening. Uh, Gunnar Joyce with Rieger Law Group, representing the applicant Jim Holmes Investments. And, uh, just to kind of reiterate here, this is a CCPUD, PUD, but really it is about allowing the existing building to remain. All the allowable uses that we're requesting are allowed on this property by a matter of right today, if you build under the CCPUD. So the purpose of this PUD is to keep the building that exists currently, uh, in place and not require, uh, Jim Holmes Investments to knock it down and rebuild on the property. So here's the location, we're at West Gray Street in La Homa. Uh, this is actually, um, you know, kind of Center City development before was cool. It's, it's zero lot line, different owners here. So this portion of the building that's outlined is owned by Jim Holmes Investments and that's the portion of the building that this CCPUD, uh, uh, would address. Go back here, again, you've already seen the subject property, but it's, it's basically three leasable spaces. Jim Holmes Investments, he, uh, owns the building and offices in it. He's going to remain in, in this space here. Uh, again, just to reiterate, we're seeking, um, to stay within the current CCPUD allowable uses. And so we're not just going to be developing out a dispensary. This middle space is currently, um, working on a, a lease draft for a, a beauty shop, a salon parlor. And then this one over here is working on a lease for, uh, a dispensary. And so this is not a rezoning solely about medical marijuana dispensaries, but more again, just to reiterate about the building as it currently exists. So let's talk about that a little more in detail. The existing zoning is Center City Form-Based Code. It is orange, urban general, which again allows for medical marijuana, processing dispensaries and many other uses. What we're seeking to, um, get an exemption from here is really the building form. So as you see this dashed black line that runs across the front of the, uh, property there, that's called the required build line. So if we were going to build under Center City Form-Based Code, which is our current zoning, we'd be required to knock down that building and build to the build line in order to use our allowable uses on this property. And additionally, all of our parking has to be behind the pink parking setback line. As you know, currently, the parking is in the front, which, which you've already seen. So it would require a substantial redevelopment of the property. And then further, this property is within the floodway. And so any redevelopment of this property has to comply with the city's floodway development, um, regulations, which is essentially that the owner cannot redevelopment outside of the current footprint of the building. So really, by the rezoning to Center City Form-Based Code, this, this property owner got stuck in limbo uh, because they were C1 local commercial. C1 local commercial today, as a matter of right, allows for medical marijuana. C1 local commercial today, as a matter of right, allows for medical marijuana dispensaries and medical marijuana processing. They are now zoned Center City Form-Based Code, which again, as a matter of right, allows for medical marijuana dispensaries and processing. However, since that they are now a C1 legacy zoning, they are stuck with the C1 zoning uses that existed at the time of Form-Based Code was passed, which did not include marijuana yet and will not include any additional C1 uses in the future that are passed. And they cannot get any more additional uses under the Form-Based Code unless they redevelop and demolish their building, which they can't do in the floodway. So that's the purpose of the CCPUD, is solely to keep the building as it exists. The allowable uses are allowed throughout this entire site, this area. As you can see, urban general up and down these streets can be redeveloped under urban general uses, which is marijuana. And then over here, again, the legacy zoning of this was always commercial. The current zoning is commercial. And so the allowable uses that the applicant is seeking to get through this request are in line with what has always been envisioned for this area. And again, just to finally note, no change to the site plan. That's what it's going to look like upon approval as well. The only caveat to the Center City Form-Based Code, as On East pointed out, is the signage. The Center City Form-Based Code signage allowances are very tiny. And so we want to ensure that Mr. Holmes can keep his existing sign and that the tenants could come in and put very similar signage like already exists today. And so that's all we did in the PUD, is said we can have tenant signage just like that exists today as tenants change from time to time. But otherwise, as staff reports notes, they don't see a negative impact with the intent of this and likely to bring in commercial activity to this section of Gray Street. And no neighbors attended predevelopment. We did receive one protest. And again, like when I stand up here and talk to you guys about medical marijuana uses, we do get protests typically. But I think it's worth noting that, you know, the longer that we do this and the more and more that we see developed and used in the economy, we're really starting to see a lot of dispensaries that do this really well. There are really nice architectural buildings. Mango Cannabis, that I passed on my way here, is a really nice building. The interior of these are really nice. They're clean. You know, there's going to be exceptions, but this is a thriving industry right now in Oklahoma. And it, you know, some of the protests about automatically going to be increasing crime, automatically going to be, you know, threats to the property value. The longer that we see, this is 2018 it was passed, now we're sitting at 2021. It's a thriving industry. It's bringing a lot of taxation revenue to the state. Bring some through the form of investment into property, into ad valorem increase taxes. You know, I think the stigma of medical marijuana as a bad use, as a noxious use, is really starting to go away. So that's all the comments that I've got in the presentation. Happy to take any more questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Jablonski, I just have one quick question. It's general. I have no sense of like how much, like how many people a store this size could serve. I'm just, I'm trying to hold it in context of, you know, we said before, how many dispensaries there are in the city. Do you have a sense of that?
So I don't know the exact square footage. I will back up here and just let you know, or let you look at it, I guess. The intended tenants are here that might give you a better idea on their intended use here. But it is a relatively small shop. It's not all three of them. You know, really, that is a point to address some of the medical marijuana concerns about bringing maybe bad elements to the neighborhood, is that this applicant, the property owner, is the landlord here. These leases, when the landlord drafts them, says that these tenants cannot do noxious uses. They cannot do nuisance. If they do, the landlord has the right to abate it. The landlord has the right to assess cost back to the tenant. And so, you know, it's worth noting that the concerns that are expressed by maybe surrounding property owners, you know, people that care about, you know, distances from schools, distances from residential, distances from office buildings, the landlord here shares those same concerns and drafts provisions into the leases to address those. And so again, that'd be something that is right in line here. The landlord is not going to be operating it. The landlord will be overseeing it and protecting.
You're not answering his question. He asked about parking. And you just went off on a bunch of stuff about protection.
Well, more number of clients served.
I apologize.
Well, my question might not have been clear.
Okay.
I mean, I agree. It doesn't seem like a large shop. And so I was curious, you know, does this serve 100 people a day or 10 people a day? I mean, those are different orders of magnitude.
All I can say on that is, hadn't been operational yet, the intended tenants are here if you'd like them to address that.
Hey guys, Chris Martin, Falcone. So I'd say this size a day. It just depends really how busy and how popular we get. But anywhere from probably 50 to 100 people in a day. So it could do a good amount of business.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Commissioner Beck, do you have a question on the parking?
No, I was going to say, I hang out at Royal Pipes and there's one next door. And I never see any cars in front, but it's all walk-up business. And then Friendly Market, there's always four or five cars in front of it, so.
I do have two questions really quick, just to understand the purpose of this application for the PUD and why it's coming in front of us. So we're only doing this section of the building. Is there a party wall agreement that Jim Holmes only owns a portion of this strip building? Is it, does he only own that part or does he own the entire building beyond what's actually being applied for?
He does not own beyond the legal description of this request.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, to make sure I understand, why we needed to do this for an existing building, for relatively existing uses? So at the time when Center City Form-Based Code was passed, and I know there's like an optional choice of which zoning to choose from, but now it's only the Form-Based Code or the previous C1 at the time CCFBC. So if there's continuing to be future requests for zoning, if we change C1 or any of the zonings in the future, none of those will affect anything in the Form-Based Code area, is that correct? Future changes to those zoning?
That is what we've been told by city staff. That's why the applicant is here. If city staff wants to say that C1 uses will continue, then we'll remove this application and we'd be allowed to do this under C1.
Let me ask you this. I remember when Walgreens developed, because I don't, I guess that's floodplain. They had to do extensive elevation raises to get their finished floor plan in there, if I remember right, to meet the floodway or floodplain requirements. At least when they built Walgreens, that's what I heard, was because you can't build in floodway or in a floodplain, you have to build a certain number of feet above that floodplain elevation. Isn't that the way that works?
Okay, so I can take Commissioner Byrd's question first and then I might defer to Mr. McClellan on Commissioner Beck's question. But as for your question, Commissioner Byrd, as to zoning. I think that Mr. Joyce did state it correctly, that what has happened was when the Center City Form-Based Code was passed, all of the existing zoning became legacied. And the important thing about legacied is, it's effective as of the time it happens. It's very similar to non-conforming uses, which means that it can't be forward-looking or else it loses its whole purpose of freezing that moment in time so that they're not affected by changes that happened after they already started. But they can't take advantage of future advances. So what happened with medical marijuana was that it was passed and the use is created after Center City was put in place. So all of the legacy zoning in Center City simply did not include medical marijuana uses. The only way to take advantage of them is to join Center City, give up that legacy zoning. And by doing that, the form-based part of the code would require them to change the building substantially to bring it up to that form that's required. So the only option for doing that and addressing it would be a CCPUD.
But, and that's where my question comes in, because if they can't, if they're in the floodplain, that's where you need to bring this up, then all of a sudden, you can't build anything there unless you build.
Yeah, well, you need to come up here and explain that to us.
I will leave that to that.
Okay, Commissioner Beck, you are correct that our current floodplain ordinance requires that new buildings be elevated two feet above the base flood elevation. In this case, this building is already there. It was there when the latest floodplain ordinance was adopted. Therefore, they're grandfathered in.
Yep.
Now however, if they decided they want to knock the building down and rebuild, they would have to meet the current ordinance requires, requirements, which means they would have to elevate two feet above the BFE. And that's what Walgreens did in a similar facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth, I'm so sorry. I didn't want to make you walk up again after you walked away. I just want to make sure I explicitly understand, because this could potentially affect how we understand the Form-Based Code in the future too, and some of these ordinances. But this legacy zoning, like let's say it was something outside of uses. And I know that this is a concern. I think it's maybe part of why we're voting on some ordinances later in this agenda too. So we have a state, we created a situation here with CCFBC that we have no place for things that are allowed by state within the perimeter now. Is that correct? Well, unless they, you do a massive redevelopment into the Form-Based Code.
Okay, well, as far as allowed by state, simply because the state has passed a law does not mean that a particular use is going to be allowed in a particular place. That's always been a matter of local regulation. And so that's why when medical marijuana was legalized within those very specific confines, we created uses to match that. So it is true that if there's a state law that creates a new use similar to medical marijuana, it's going to be the same story for legacy zoned properties such as this.
For example, also if we created a change in setback or parking requirements, other things, any other changes to any of our zoning codes won't affect any of those legacy in Form-Based Code districts. Is that right? Like, I mean, like a setback requirement. So if we change setback requirements in like a residential area from, you know, 25 feet to 10 feet, for example, if that was changed, it would not affect any of those legacy codes prior to CCFBC.
Well, that's a promise I can't make, because I can't speak to what future ordinances may come down. And, you know, I mean theoretically, and this is truly theoretically, I mean, the entire Center City could be rezoned itself, again, just like it was the first time to Center City. So I can't speak to what might happen or could happen. There could theoretically be an ordinance that could affect that. But generally, the concept of grandfathering is, yes, that it applies to those matters that are within the grandfathered zoning, the non-conforming zoning, or the legacy zoning, whatever you're dealing with.
And do we have in our zoning code, any of that grandfathered zoning written in? If we change, like let's say we make a change to our zoning so that somebody can refer back to that grandfathered zoning, to know what it was and what they actually have the right to do with their property?
There are city records, of course, of what, you know, ordinances were in place at particular times. It is a challenge, of course, but yes, there are records of that. And of course, grandfathered is a kind of antiquated term for non-conforming, illegal non-conforming uses. And we do have provisions in our zoning ordinance that talk about how those items are treated and when they no longer are considered to be legal non-conforming, when they cross that line and have to comply with the current zoning. Center City is a separate mechanism and it has its own provisions in that regard. And the reason that it's a separate mechanism is because there are a number of things that could, you know, for lack of a better word, trigger that code. So those are set out in very specific provisions. And whenever there's a matter that comes before this body or the city council, city staff will always be very clear to explain why it is that the Center City is being triggered.
Okay, so I think this might have been our first example of this. So I just want to basically document this of record, that for maybe city councils' benefit as they read the minutes, that we might need to consider this. As I know Center City Form-Based Code is under consideration for a second review. And this is maybe a loophole or a consideration that needs to be made, because I do think our zoning codes need to be very accessible, that people can read them. And I don't like the idea that you'd have to go really dig in for potential grandfathered and make that kind of effort. Or that we can't have a way for things to be brought current, if they'd like to be brought current, that we'd have to keep doing these PUDs, because I think we all could have saved some time here today. So that's my comment. Thank you. All right, any other comments, questions for the applicant? Any other, is there any comments from the audience? Seeing none, any other discussion or can I take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
And a vote, please.
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried 4 to 2.
Moving forward to item 17, East Village Spud. It's 170-21-22-9. East Village at 12th Avenue LLC requests rezoning of a portion of the existing PUD planned unit development. 0-04032, am I on the wrong item? Oh, okay, point order, sorry. We've had a request for a break. You want to take a 15? Yeah, let's take a 15-minute recess and return. Thank you. I was going to power through, guys.
I wasn't going to power through, guys.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I take an applicant presentation.
All right. Good evening. Gunner Joyce again with Rieger Law Group for the applicant. Very similar request. This is a spud. It is a rezoning of an existing PUD. The reason this is a spud is because it is affecting only less than five acres of the existing PUD. The entire PUD had a whole bunch of different lots in it, residential uses. And then three buildings to the east, these are the three that we're seeking to rezone. There are residential, existing allowable residential uses on the upper stories, and the ground stories are retail uses. Basically, the intent of this is to get more commercial activity and tenants into this building. It's been an area that's had a real difficulty in finding tenants. Some of the commercial spaces were never even finished out, have never had tenants in them. And so we're expanding on the allowable uses, keeping them in line with C1, like the Norman C1 zoning ordinance is basically what we mirrored for the requested uses here. Here are the three buildings. There's three separate buildings. Like I said, this rezoning only changes the allowable uses on the ground floors. This is the northernmost building. You can see this is probably the building that has had the most success with tenants. But as we move to the south, there's empty spaces that have never had tenants, never been finished on some of them on the interiors. And the southernmost used to be land run bar and grill here that is no longer there. So existing zoning is PUD, and up on the top right-hand corner of your screen, you see an older PUD. This is what they used to say, is just use. And it says mixed-use development with retail uses along the east side of the site. And that's really all it said to address the type of uses. And so in the spuds and puds that we bring today, city staff is making us list out, you know, more extensive lists so that when an applicant comes forward, they know exactly what's allowed in the site. So that's what we've done here. We've listed out a list of allowable uses that mirrors Norman C1 local commercial district, again, just for the ground stories. If we click forward here, basically that's the summary, is really seeking to get more allowable uses. The full list is probably included in your packet. The only one that we've received any comment and protest on is, might be surprising to you all, but medical marijuana dispensary. That is something that is allowed in, again, Norman C1. And it's also allowed, as a matter of right, in Norman C2 zoning districts, which are all around the site. If you look at the map here, the zoning map, all these reds are C2, which allow for dispensaries and processing again. So that's really the intent here. Again, worth pointing out that the applicant and the owner is a landlord, again, in this situation, that has a vested interest to protect their investment, to protect their lease spaces, and to ensure that, you know, they can get top dollar per square foot when they lease these out to commercial tenants. And so their leases can have those provisions that we discussed earlier about no nuisance, about requiring additional security. And then also worth mentioning, I didn't say earlier, but have previously to you that the Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Agency, O-M-M-A, has pretty stringent security restrictions on dispensaries and processors. So again, that's the only use that I imagine caught any protest and that maybe you guys will want to talk about. But worth mentioning, too, is office uses are now allowed and more kind of verbose list that comes from the zoning ordinance. So happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the applicant?
I actually have one. Commissioner Jablonski. These state laws, do they address when you have a mixed use, where you have commercial on the bottom and residential on top? The reason I ask is, there's a donut store over there, and I imagine you can smell the donuts when they're being made. And I don't know what all is involved with marijuana processing, but is this something that could impact people living in those residential units above?
There is not a distance requirement from residential. We've had other similar kind of requests. The last one was one that, you know, dispensary is fairly close to residential units. And so no, there's nothing that would restrict it away from mixed use or residential.
But in terms of processing, I mean, can there be an effect, I mean, like the donut shop, right? You're going to smell the donuts. I have no idea what goes on with processing.
Again, I think that would come down more to the market and the leaseability of both the tenant space and the residential spaces up above and the property values that would kind of let the market and the economy dictate that. But there's nothing that would prevent it, no.
I do not believe we currently in a lit, Beth, or somebody correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we have any kind of odor nuisance ordinance. Beth might, well, she's coming up to clarify for me. We do have light nuisance, but I don't know that we have odor.
Hi, Beth McCalla, City Attorney's Office. Yes, no, we do not have any odor regulations or anything like that, if that's what you're getting at.
Right.
In a city level. There are also no state odor regulations. If there's going to be anything like that, that's always just a matter of an individual type of decision in a specific zoning request. We've seen them in PUDs or special uses, but there's no actual regulation on that.
What about, like, off-gassing?
I'm sorry?
Like off-gassing? So I'm imagining, like, if you had a commercial process, you know, there'd be chemicals and gases come off. I have no idea what's involved with marijuana processing. And so I don't know. I don't smoke marijuana, but I know if I rented an apartment above, I wouldn't want to get high.
Well, okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Joyce. I'm only seeing medical marijuana dispensary and tier one and tier two medical pro- okay. So those are, tier one and tier two are processors. But that is actually kind of a tricky thing that was created, the state law. Processor was really, really broad when it was first passed by the state, and it basically meant look sideways at the marijuana and you're processing it. So we changed ours to a tier system that kind of separated out the non-extracting uses for processing. And we have, so grind and roll, and then adding a concentrate created off-site, adding that to a derivative product. So if you're thinking about off-gassing in terms of actual extraction processes, those would not be falling under the tier one or tier two uses. Does that answer your question?
I heard pre-roll, so that's basically someone sitting around making pre-rolls all day long.
Yeah, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert, but my understanding is they're grinding, and then there's the actual packaging, pre-rolling part of it.
And then you're making brownies, and who likes to smell, who doesn't like the smell of brownies? So, I mean, you're talking about...
My expertise only goes so far, and it does not include baking of any kind. I hope that answered your question.
Commissioner Jablonski, I will say from my experience with working with a lot of landlords and property owners that the smell does occasionally become an issue. So I have seen a lot of leases that specifically address it. I've also seen it on dog grooming places, but that's what I think Mr. Joyce was referring to, is that it's usually handled at a landlord level. Now, I wouldn't hate to see, based on the increase of this industry, maybe some sort of city-based odor system. It'd be pretty hard to probably measure some of that because it is so subjective. And then, you know, that would also probably affect our donut shops because maybe somebody doesn't want to smell brownies, and maybe it's a migraine trigger, so. But to that effect, it is usually handled on a landlord base. It's not necessarily handled in a city base for filtration systems and things like that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Any comments from the audience? Any planning commission discussion?
I have something I need to say. I would like to see us, as a group, as a body, have a conversation about this because if we've already got 57 of these establishments, and we're tonight, we probably are going to approve two more. We've already approved one, and we're probably going to approve a second one. At what point, I mean, I just think it's getting out of hand. And I know it may be a slow roll. We can't stop. But I think we need to have a conversation about the wisdom of where we locate some of these things. Because I don't think putting a medical marijuana dispensary three blocks from a high school, where the kid's going to walk at lunch. I mean, we ought to make it a little harder for him to get it than allowing them to come and snack on their lunchtime. And this bothers me tremendously, and it's been bothering me for some time. And I just, I would like to see us have a conversation among ourselves, or perhaps have a conversation with the city council about, like you said, that some kind of ordinance or some kind of discussion about ways to slow this process down or take a long look at where we locate some of these facilities and things like that. Because I don't like this at all.
I'll just make a real quick comment. I don't think it's this body's position to dictate the type of commerce that goes on. We're here to make sure we conform to the code. And, I mean, someone might come in and say they're concerned with the number of attorneys in town, and we should, now, I want to change that. I'll change that. How about places you can get your hair done? I mean, there's a lot of things out there that we might all agree with, but I think that this body is to make sure that we conform to code and we make sure that the intent of land use is being followed through. And I just don't, I think it's hard. I think it's hard on items such as this, so. But I hear what you're saying, but I think it's hard.
I don't disagree with what you just said either. I think that's the dilemma. Is, you know, where, how do you draw a line that's a reasonable line?
Yeah.
And at what point, you know?
Well, the market will draw the line.
Doesn't seem to be.
If there's too many, the market will draw the line, so.
I appreciate these comments, but just to push back a little bit, we draw all sorts of lines in society. You know, there's no such thing as a free market for good reason, and that's because free markets are always unstable. And so the question becomes, where do we put the guardrails? Do we put them quite broad, or do we narrow them some? And so I do think it's worth having a discussion. I'm not against medical marijuana. I have no problem with it. I was telling Commissioner Bayham, there's a silver lining. I've talked to my kids at an earlier age than I thought I would about marijuana because we see the dispensaries, and that's actually probably a very good thing. But I do think it's worth asking the question, how many do we need? And not just letting the market rev as much as it wants. I think it's a conversation worth having, at least. Whether or not we come to an outcome, whether or not we make it, you know, we are only an advisory committee. Whether or not we decide to pass on advice to the city council, I do think it's worth having a future conversation and putting it on the agenda for a future meeting.
So I would say that the city has previously kind of looked at this and made changes, and that's where the tier one, tier two systems came in. So there is some opportunity there for having some of these things fit in and where these things fit in, but those would fall into changes to those zoning ordinances. So that would kind of come, then, to this to be taken to plan, you know, this goes from planning commission to city council for consideration on some of those ordinances. And Beth, it looks like she wants to jump in, and maybe she can tell us how ordinances get passed. Like, how do we make a bill?
I just wanted to point out that further down on this agenda that we do have an ordinance we're considering regarding marijuana regulations, and perhaps a more global discussion of that would be more appropriate when we get to that point. And instead, we focus back on this particular application on the agenda.
No, we want to just sit here and keep talking till about midnight.
It's early.
So if we're in agreeance, then, do we have any more discussion on this particular item?
I move.
I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried four to two.
And thank you, Beth, for keeping us on track. All right, moving to Trailwoods West PUD. Item 180-2122-12, Sweetgrass Partners LLC, requests rezoning from R1 single-family dwelling district to PUD planned unit development for 10.48 acres of property generally located a half mile south of Tecumseh Road on the east side of 12th Avenue Northwest, Trailwoods West Edition. And our staff presentation.
Okay, so now we have an application from Sweetgrass Partners LLC for a rezoning to planned unit development district. And so there's the subject tracked. It is currently R1, single-family dwelling district. It is surrounded by planned unit development O-0809-32 to the north, planned unit development O-060749 to the east. And then to the south is I1 light industrial, and to the west is I2 heavy industrial. And the existing land use is vacant. To the north and east are residential. To the south is vacant as well, and to the west is industrial. There's an aerial of the site. And then this is looking from 12th Avenue at the site. Here is looking across 12th Avenue from the site. This is north on 12th Avenue. And this is south. And so this is a 10.48 acre lot. It had a 2025 land use designation of low-density residential. So no land use plan amendment is needed. It was platted as Trailwoods West, and this rezoning is to allow for different setbacks, lot coverages, and lot sizes than are allowed in R1. So this PUD allows for only single-family uses, not multifamily or commercial, which I know was an issue with some of the protest letters. And staff forwards O-2122-12 for your consideration.
Did you need to show the protest map?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed click that. Oh, there we go. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, there were three letters. They were, that comprised 0.72% of the protest area.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I take the applicant presentation.
Thank you. Gunner Joyce with Rieger Law Group, representing the applicant. Sean gave me a non-medical marijuana one this time, so I'll be pretty quick here. But this is going to be Ideal Homes Development. Zach Roach is here with Ideal Homes. If you've got any questions for the developer about the neighborhood. But really, a pretty minor rezoning. It is actually sort of a whoops moment, and I got permission from Zach to say that. But, you know, this was a rezoning to R1 single-family, but was always meant to be part of the Trailwoods PUD. And it was caught after this development. That same layout, as you see, was already approved and final-platted and filed all the way through public improvements being built and accepted by the city. But then it was caught that it was not developed per R1 standards. It was developed per the Trailwoods standards. And so that's what we're here to do, is clean that up and bring it into a PUD which mirrors exactly what is allowed in the Trailwoods neighborhood. This will be Section 12 of that same neighborhood. And again, just to reiterate, this is solely about, you know, bringing it into Trailwoods, and it is not requesting any multifamily uses, no apartments. This will be exactly what's already started to be constructed out there, more single-family residential homes. Here's the kind of legalities of it. As you can see, it's zoned R1. Just kind of a mishap on a lot of people's ends, including ours. Thought it was included in the Trailwoods, but as you can see, it's not pink. And so we're just going to bring it into that same PUD. As you see on the 2025 plan, low-density residential, no change sought. And so here's an aerial. This is a more updated. It was about a year ago. But as you can already see here, the streets were being built and developed out. And then here's what it's going to look like when it's finally developed, just more single-family houses connecting to Trailwoods. It'll be 42 single-family residential lots. And again, no change to the layout, no change to the development from the final plat. That was previously approved and filed. So this will technically be a replat of that final plat. And I think I basically said the summary already, but just staff report quotes. It is already platted for this single-family use. It's an extension of Trailwoods, and all the sanitary sewer, water, street paving, and drainage are already in place for the development. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions for the applicant?
What percentage of these houses are going to be accessible?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Beck. I think that, you know, that Ideal Homes has a strong track record when it comes to accessibility and are always looking for opportunities to continue to progress.
You guys are very helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a quick one about parks. I'm looking at this, and I can't tell. How far away is the nearest park? So, or what would be the maximum walking distance from a home to a park?
I apologize. I don't have the distance. But there's a Trailwoods, pretty extensive park as part of this neighborhood. And the original final plat went through the Parks Board, and it recognized that the Trailwoods Park was adequate for this development. And so there's no Parks Board requirement. This go around because we're not changing any part of that development. But I don't know the exact distance from that. I might have kind of the splash pad up here. Zach, you might help me out a little bit here, but.
And it stood out because it said they previously paid a fee there.
So there's a green, what amounts to a green walking trail on the far north side of the development. If you'll notice, that, whether the white plat is on the common area, if you follow that green trail, you can access a basketball court right there. And then we have a system of trails that wraps for a couple of miles that interconnect between there. There's a splash pad on the south side, kind of the south central quadrant of that development. So we have access to that. And then just to the north of there is the extensive parks and playgrounds of Greenleaf Trails. So those residents are going to have plenty of walking opportunity. One of the things that we featured throughout the PUD, both in Trailwoods and Greenleaf Trails, is a commitment to making sure that we can have residents be able to walk and try and increase that pedestrian access to all those places, utilizing things like cut-throughs. There's a four-foot fence actually on the north side of that so those residents can just hop out their backyard and get on there. And those are all elements that we brought in, trying to be intentional about that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, are there any comments from the audience? Seeing none, any planning commission discussion? If none, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted six to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to zoning code amendments. Item 190-2122-6, an ordinance for the city, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, mending Chapter 22 zoning ordinance, Section 431.5, off-street ordinance for residential and multifamily and all office, commercial, and industrial districts less C3-intensive commercial districts, and providing for the separability thereof. Do we want to vote on these zoning amendments one at a time or together, team? Anybody have a preference if I should, if we want to vote them together or separately?
Together.
Together.
So then, moving also into item 20O-2122-7. Okay, we have a request that they be voted on separately. So we are going to start with just item 19.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go, 19. I guess, staff presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners Jane Hudson, Norman Planning Department. So the item that we have before you tonight is an ordinance amendment. I have to say that this has been a long process. I looked back at some of the records, and they have been discussing parking requirements, minimum parking requirements, maximum parking requirements since approximately 2013. I think that they've probably been doing it before that, but that's what I found from 2013. Again, council has directed staff to review the possible amendments to the current parking regulations. The Community Planning and Transportation Committee, we have met multiple times in the last few years over, again, this discussion, talking about minimum, maximum requirements. In that process, the EDC, the Engineering Design Criteria, was also brought forward with Dr. Evenson when she was at the Stormwater and Public Works, as well as the city engineer. They are looking at updating the EDC. And within that EDC, there's also the discussion about how we can better park, better build some of these parking lots that we are getting. The EDC is not done. However, there is the desire for city staff to go ahead and move forward with changing some of these parking requirements. So in July of this year, at the council study session, staff was directed to bring forward this amendment from required to recommended. So the proposal that we have before you tonight, within the zoning ordinance under parking for single and two-family dwellings, there will still be a requirement of two parking spaces per dwelling unit. So if you have a duplex, you're going to have four parking spaces. The fraternity and sorority houses, we were not comfortable with taking that away. At this time, we still feel like that should still provide one parking space per sleeping accommodation within those houses. Those are still very close to a lot of the single-family neighborhoods there on campus, and we didn't want to change that at this time. And for mobile home parks, one of the things we were looking at, they're very tightly compact developments. And so keeping that parking requirement at two per each unit would probably be a benefit. Another thing that we're looking at is a proposed change for the apartments. This will be a recommendation. This will not be a requirement. So it currently is at 1.8 per dwelling unit. We're looking at, as a suggestion, 1.2. So when they come in with their applications, they can take that 1.2 as a consideration and, you know, develop their parking area for that. Same thing for boarding and rooming houses. It was 1.8. We're proposing to change that from down to one. And then for the hotel motel, it was 1.2. We're taking that down to one per each room. In addition to any restaurant use, should they have that associated with the hotel? And again, that will still be a recommended. They can reference the recommended parking for restaurant use, and they can, you know, go with that guideline. Any of the other remaining uses within the zoning ordinance for the parking will be recommended parking regulations, and they can utilize these numbers as a guide as they move forward. So staff does present this to you. Ordinance 2122-6 for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on this item.
I have a question. Was there any change to any of the commercial and industrial parking requirements? Or was it only on these residential apartment and these boarding houses that you outlined?
It was. Nothing else was changed, just that, the middle bullet there, where the apartments, boarding houses, and hotels, we took it from the 1.8 and the 1.2 down to one. So there's been no other changes. Everything else is just going to follow the recommended, and they can use that as a reference point in the industrial or a barber shop or anything like that. They can look at what's in there, look at what they need for their development. And, you know, hopefully, a business owner is going to know what they need for their site, and they can utilize those numbers. Did I answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So when we talk about parking, residential parking, what comes to my mind is the nightmare that we've created on Campus Corner with all the duplexes and 10 cars and 12 cars parked behind those things. How are we dealing with that? Is that part of this ordinance? Because we've talked about needing to deal with that or finding some way of making parking cost something rather than providing free parking all over every place? How are we dealing with that? I don't see that. I don't see that being addressed here.
Well, that's not addressed here. That's something that we're going to continue to talk about. One of the things that, like I said, with the EDC that's being discussed and some of the guidelines that they're looking at, while that's not going to look at a duplex and say you can only have four parking spaces on that site, possibly, you know, they'll be required to have some sort of mediation or something for those, those areas that they will be parking in the back. I, I don't know which direction we'll go, Commissioner Beck. I mean, it'll depend on what we, you know, get directed from council. But at this time, the goal really was to go ahead and get this in place and
Okay.
See how we can benefit from it.
The, the scope is real specific.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Yeah, because I've had lots of discussions about street parking, or no street parking, what to do about these large shopping centers that we have that have billions of parking spots. And, you know, we keep talking about wanting to have higher densities and better walkability. So that's all going on, that conversation is still happening.
That conversation is still happening. And another thing that, again, in, in this, you know, large discussion that's going on, exactly what you're talking about, those, those large parking lots that are sitting there vacant. You know, on Main Street, we just had Scooters Coffee come in.
Yep.
Now, they came in as a lease, they didn't buy that lot.
Okay.
So that's something else that we're just continuing on in this, this discussion. If someone wants to actually buy a pad site as opposed to lease it, there's additional plating subdivision regulations that are going to come into play on that. So this whole conversation is just a big circle of 100 items.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Anything else? Any other questions?
So we need a motion to approve?
Any audience comments? Any planning commission discussion? Motion.
So move.
Second.
And vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried six to zero.
Moving to item 200-2122-7, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, mending Section 22-431.2, communication facilities of Article XII of Chapter 22, zoning ordinance, to establish and further define additional standards for small cell applications, and providing for the separability thereof. And a staff presentation.
Heather Poole with the City Attorney's Office. This item was originally on the Planning Commission's August 12th meeting agenda, but was not heard at that time. The meeting didn't have a quorum. We also are only allowed to, per the agenda, have the Planning Commission either approve or disprove the current amendments that we're proposing. There has been discussion with AT&amp;T, who reached out and had a conference call with legal staff and multiple AT&amp;T attorneys, to address some of their concerns with our current amendments, which were addressing concerns that were raised at a meeting in June. Go ahead and... Some of the background of small cell is that this allows for more increased reception and allows for 5G to be used within the city. The concern is that you need multiple poles closer together within a range to allow the 5G and the small cell to be utilized. The federal government really favors this expansion and has, in much of the same way as you'll be hearing shortly, limited the types of controls that municipalities can place upon restrictions, that they can place upon providers who are wanting to install these within cities. These are some examples of small cell structures, and they can often be designed in such a way that they are incorporated within the designs of the neighborhoods and do not, can be made aesthetically pleasing for the neighborhood styles. The benefits to small technology is that you can blend them into the surroundings, and it does improve capacity in dense areas, and again, is sort of a doorway to 5G technology. The concern is that if there's less flexibility for placement locations, and the city's understanding was that they had a 1,500-foot range. But during our call yesterday, AT&amp;T's attorneys made clear that really, it's less than 1,500-foot. So they are also discovering more as they implement these throughout metropolitan areas in Oklahoma. So we had, so the federal law, again, there's a very strong preference. We have some ability to regulate, but really FCC wants to see these implemented, so our ability to restrict is very limited to zoning and aesthetics within the neighborhood. We can regulate the placement, the construction, and the modification of these. We can charge fair and reasonable compensation for permits, and we can manage our public rights of way so that they do not impede access to sidewalks or properties. We cannot prohibit them placing these on OGN E light poles. As a matter of fact, the state statute requires OGN E to allow AT&amp;T access to some of their structures. My understanding in our call yesterday, though, is OGN E does not want them on, which this makes sense, electrical transponders, for probably safety and maintenance reasons. We can't require a lot of documentation from the vendors who are asking to place small cell structures within the city, and we cannot prohibit their coming in and implementing these. And we can't discriminate amongst the different providers. I will say, the one provider who's really reached out and submitted applications to Norman has been AT&amp;T. Senate Bill 1388 is the Oklahoma Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act, and it applies to how these structures will be co-located on other wireless facilities, either by another wireless provider in cities right-of-way, and also deployment of utility bills or other structures to support small wireless facilities. We can require a permit if it is generally applicable to access to the right-of-way by other entities. So in other words, we can't discriminate against them, but we can treat them in the same way as other providers who are accessing the right-of-way. We have to determine, and this is by federal law, the staff of the city has to determine whether an application is complete within 20 days of receiving that. And after we've determined it's a completed application, the city only has 75 days to either approve or deny it. You can accept consolidated applications for up to 25 separate small cell facilities. And you can, once the work has been approved for those sites, the provider has to complete that within one year, and their permit is valid for 10. And a lot of that is mirroring what the federal statutes and requirements are. Again, they're very supportive of wanting this in. What Norman's initial ordinance had, which is based off of the state statute, and the Oklahoma Municipal League, had set up a meeting in conjunction with small cell providers, other municipal attorneys, and had worked together to have a basic form for an ordinance. And Norman's initial ordinance was based off of that. These requirements, that new and modified poles cannot be 10 feet taller than the tallest existing pole within 500 feet, and it cannot be 50 feet above the ground level, all of the, in the size limitations and following objective criteria for concealment, all of these are based off of that OML format that was determined between providers and other municipal attorneys. The same thing with these basic permitting fees and the occupancy fees, those are within Norman's current ordinance and are based off of that OML standard. We have, after meeting with AT&amp;T in June, we proposed these amendments to allow that a vendor has to provide an affidavit explaining why they cannot co-locate on other poles or structures that are already present, either an OGN E or another wireless provider's structure. During the call yesterday with AT&amp;T's attorneys and representatives, there was a outside counsel for AT&amp;T that indicated they had a wording that was used by other states that they would like us to consider to make what they considered our requirements, to have an engineer attest to the fact that there were, it was impossible or would not work well to, would not be reasonable to require them to loc, co-locate on another structure, or that it was, they could not put a structure up, they needed to have it within that 500-feet radius that we were rejecting to, and that we would agree, their wording was, for them to provide a certified statement from the vendor, so in this case it would be AT&amp;T with their application, that stated that they'd had an engineer review the situation, but not necessarily have to provide the report from the engineer. So we have agreed to change that, but again, that amendment cannot be made from the floor because all the planning commission can do is to either approve or disprove our present amendment as we've presented to you. Again, the current ordinance sets out the fees, and the clock is based off of the federal requirement for when a city has determined the permit approval or denial. The other changes that we incorporated are in red, where we added that they cannot block or encroach on sidewalks or walkways. And we also added that no new pole for a small cell facility can be located within a 500-foot radius of an existing wireless support structure based on the same side of the street. And we changed that because we used to have, again, Norman's understanding was that small cell wireless had a 1,500 radius of transmission. Apparently, it's less than that, but nonetheless, we had had that they could not have a new small cell facility within 500 feet of any other structure. And part of that was based on, some of the locations that they were asking to put poles were along Main Street by Sprouts, where we already have 20-some poles in a line. There was another location where there were three poles in front of a residence. And so we were trying to address both the aesthetics and the reasonableness for individual property owners for placements of these. So we changed, based on discussing with AT&amp;T, we changed the 500-foot from each, any other pole to 500 feet within another small cell wireless structure. Here are some of the examples of why Norman's ordinance was the way we had initially written it, to try to limit the number of poles specifically within specific zoning areas. The, sorry, the dot shows that this particular location where they're asking to place it would be the third pole in front of this same address. This is another one where we have existing streetlights that are close to the location, but they're wanting to put it in the residence instead of on the Main Street, where in the city's view, that would have been a better location and more aesthetically pleasing for the neighborhood. We looked at, again, the OML proposed language, Bixby's ordinance, we looked at ordinances from Little Rock and other cities, to try to come up to with a way where we could address AT&amp;T's concerns, that we were restricting them to 500 feet within other locations, and the last discussion we had this week about asking them to have documentations from an engineer, instead of simply having their staff say, "We have had an engineer review this." Again, the latest discussions, this particular ordinance may change somewhat, but we're not changing the substantive measures of it. By the time it gets to council, we're trying to work out exactly what wording AT&amp;T is interested in, that would also address other vendors that may come to the city as well. Are there any questions of myself? That was a very quick overview, I apologize, but, but anyway.
So you said you've looked at other cities and how they dealt with it? I mean, obviously, I understand the concern in a residential neighborhood that it just doesn't stick out like a big old sore thumb, but it looked like some of the examples that you showed are fairly aesthetically integrated. So how are other cities protecting their residential neighborhoods that you picked up on?
Well, and that was what Bixby has set out a list of requests that they have, the staff, that they have the applicants look at. And that led to the changes that we set out, which were that they, the application for one of these towers would not be accepted unless, and we had had that an engineer would provide a written documentation. After our discussion yesterday with AT&amp;T's attorneys, we changed that to simply a certified written documentation that was documented by a qualified licensed professional engineer, sets out that the cell facility planned for the proposed wireless structure cannot be accommodated on an existing or approved utility pole, or an electrical transmission tower, or any other existing structure within 500 feet of the proposed new wireless. And then there's a listing of other items, like, you know, the structure won't support it, they can't find a reasonable lease, they can't enter into a reasonable lease with the owner of the pole, that they're putting it, their new structure on that other pole will cause interference with the other items on it. And that was our way of saying, if there is any other pole that you can utilize, you have to explain to us why you can't before you install yet another one.
Okay.
And we based that off of Bixby's, and then also, we conveniently enough, had a conference today, and I discussed with Bell City and Oklahoma City, and they also are kind of asking for why they cannot co-locate before they install a new pole.
Makes sense.
What happened with the three poles in front of the same house?
Well, AT&amp;T had submitted 70-some applications in 2018. I think there were four the city approved. The city basically came and asked for situations like that, and we sort of were in a détente. And so there was no pole installed in front of that house. But clearly, we would like for AT&amp;T and other vendors to be able to bring small cell and 5G to the city. So we're trying to work on a way that balances the concerns of residents and the aesthetics with the need for them to be able to install them. And I believe a representative from AT&amp;T is here to address you as well.
They can't be installed in a tree?
No, I think it actually needs to be a solid substantive structure.
Oh, okay.
Any other?
They can't be installed to look like a tree? I've seen towers out in California, and New Arizona, and Mexico.
And North Carolina.
And North Carolina, they just look like palm trees, or pine trees, or...
I think those are usually bigger structures for cell towers.
Oh, they were, huge.
Oh, these structures are usually below 50 feet, yeah.
It could look like a Japanese maple.
Any, any other questions for staff? I, I think that I'd like to hear the AT&amp;T's commentary on here, too.
Thank you very much. Jason Constable for AT&amp;T. Just want to start by saying how much we've enjoyed working with the, the legal team here at the city. We've had a great working relationship, and they've been very accommodating and have listened to all of our concerns, and so we, we very much appreciate that. As Heather said, the city has a long list of levers that it can pull in regulating small cell technology. They can make sure that the right-of-ways are protected, they can make sure that the aesthetics blend in with surrounding, whether that's the color, the size, the material of the poles. They also have the ability to make sure that it doesn't impede any traffic, and that, so there's a lot of different types of things that the city can do as far as where a provider might, might place a small cell. And we're fine with all of them, except for one. There's one current ordinance that states you cannot put a small cell if there is another pole... pole within 500 feet. So there's no room really currently in the ordinance to come in and ask for a waiver, or to say, "Well, there are other poles, but we can't, we can't place upon them for various reasons." So we've tried to work with the city to say, "What kind of compromise can we reach here?" We'd really like to, really like to have a compromise, too. The other important thing to note, when we're deploying small cells, we really deploy them in clusters. So it's not just one here and one here, but we'll have an area that we're really trying to serve, and so we'll have to have multiple small cells that we kind of place around that whole area. So when you move one, especially if you're moving at a significant distance, now you have to re-engineer the entire cluster of them. So it becomes really problematic. So a lot of times, I hear someone say, "Well, why can't you just move it down the street? Or why can't you just move it 50 feet over?" Well, perhaps that is an option, but now I have to go back and I have to re-engineer the entire cluster, and that may also create some additional problems. So I, I think the compromise that we're working on with the city, and I think it's a good one, is to say, "This is what we'd like to do. We'd like to, we'd like to put a small cell in. If there is not a suitable replacement within 200 feet, then we can put up a new, a new, new pole, okay? If there is a pole within 200 feet of where we're looking to place, we will, we'll do all the surveys and we'll provide all the documentation about why we can't go into any of those individual poles." A lot of those poles are OGN E poles, the vast majority of them. We love to be on OGN E poles, we're on a lot of them. Lot of them are distribution poles, and they just won't allow us on them. Recently, we've, we've kind of expanded our relationship, and so now there's more poles that they allow us on, but there's still a great deal of them that they just won't. So if they don't allow us on the pole, then we have to put up a new one. And I'd love to take questions.
Question I have is, how does this conversation affect how we're voting tonight?
You know, and I know that the question is for Heather, but the ordinance that I think you have before you is to modify the, the restriction about, "I cannot put up a new pole if there is a pole within 500 feet." That's what's really preventing us from making any kind of meaningful investment here in the city. So we're looking at, what can we do to, to change that?
Well, but that's not our job, and we're not in that pay grade, so how can we vote on this if that hasn't been worked out yet?
Right, and more to the point, because of how the agenda is listed, even if you wanted to make a amendment from the floor to say, "We'd like to recommend 200 feet instead of the 500 that the study group looked at," we're precluded from the agenda by doing that. What, what the staff would recommend is to go ahead for the planning commission and either recommend the current modifications that are before you to the present ordinance in an effort for the city to continue moving forward so that the city council can hear this at the next meeting, or determine that you don't want to recommend that we move forward on these amendments. But you can't really make an amendment to what's been presented to you on the floor.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, yeah. But basically, we could just say, "We'd like to postpone our decision on this until we hear more information."
You can't. If you do that, that will bump back when the city council can take this up.
So would it be better for us to go ahead and approve this and allow this to go to city council, and then city council then can make amendments to, to the ordinance at that time?
That, nicely, that was what I was attempting to state as the staff recommendations.
Let's just pass it along, let's just pick it down the road.
I have, I have a question for the representative from AT&amp;T. Can you give me a concrete example, maybe one of the pictures we saw earlier, of why the 500-foot rule is bad and the 200-foot rule is better?
So...
Because I'm not convinced that, I think it's a matter of convenience for the company, to be honest.
The 500-foot rule, as it is in the ordinance today, states you cannot put up a pole if there's a pole within 500 feet. And it just says pole, didn't even matter what kind of pole, I mean theoretically, a flag pole. So, so under that situation, out of 74 applications, we were only able to get three of those approved. We only had three locations where there was not a pole within 500 feet. What we're proposing today isn't a blanket 200 feet, if there's not a pole within 200 feet, then you can put up a new one. It is kind of more of a, we will look at the 200-foot radius around where we're trying to put a small cell. So we'll look at the 200 feet around that, and any poles that are on there, we will offer an explanation as to why we can't co-locate on them. Yes, absolutely.
Part of what Norman has responded to that concern with is to say, "We're not limiting them to any pole within 500 feet unless there's another small cell within 500 feet, then you can go ahead and put a pole." So there may be 10 different poles near there, a light pole, an OGN E pole, a telephone, you know, an old landline telephone pole. They're not required to locate, co-locate on those, they're only limited unless there's another small cell within 500 feet. But we do ask, if there are those other poles, you're not precluded from applying to put up a small cell, but you do have to explain why you cannot locate, co-locate on the other poles that are nearby.
Yeah, that just sounds reasonable. That's why I asked for a specific example.
Did, did I satisfy the, the question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any audience comments?
What audience?
Any planning commission discussion? And take a motion.
I move to approve.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried six to zero.
Okay, moving to item 21, O-2122-16, consideration of acceptance, rejection amendment, or postmoment of an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 13-108 in article 1 of chapter 13, licenses and occupations, amending art of XIV, section 13, 3401, in chapter 13, licenses and occupations, amending section 4.24.1, C2, general commercial district, and section 426.1, I1, light industrial district, both in article XI of chapter 22 zoning ordinance, and amending section 450 definitions in article XIV of chapter 22 zoning ordinance, in order to add permitted and special uses for medical marijuana waste facilities, and to implement changes and resolve inconsistencies resulting from the 2021 state law updates regarding medical marijuana, and providing for the severability thereof. Okay, staff presentation. Thank God I didn't lose my voice this morning.
Yeah, you're welcome for that. It sounds a, like a whole lot more than it is, by that title, but we are here to talk about changes that respond directly to recent changes in state law regarding medical marijuana. Now, it really was a short timeline for this. Once the session closed, the laws ended up in a completely surprising way than anyone anticipated, so we really had to wait to the last minute to see how it was going to go, and then rush this ordinance to you, because a lot of these things become effective November 1st. So we're working against the clock here, so we really are talking strictly about what responds to that state law. Oh dear, this is confusing me again, sorry. Yeah, okay, there we go, sorry. There were four successful bills regarding medical marijuana. Now, only the red highlighted language actually affects our ordinances, so I will take through them quickly. The first one talked about disclosure of financial interest, that's not something we regulate on a local level, so it doesn't affect our ordinance. It really has to do with what these companies, what these entities are showing the state regarding their ownership upfront to get their state licenses. Senate bill 862, it made smoking and vaping references in state law consistent. There were some that said, "Smoke and vape, tobacco," but not necessarily smoke and vape, marijuana, now it all matches. And there's also some public, you can, public trusts now are within the publicly-owned property that can declare smoke-free locations, things like that, not affecting our ordinances tonight, though. There was Senate bill 1033, it's updating school setback language. I think by now, you've seen about three or four updates to this, it's really getting confusing, because Senate, our House bill 2646 is going to update it again. None of that affects our ordinance, because we never adopted language doing that. We've left the state enforcement of that setback to the state, and it's, it's proven to save us a whole lot of amendments, so we might consider keeping doing that. But House bill 2646 is really what affects you mostly, and I should point out, this is very much like the other updates we've brought, where we're doing licensing and zoning together. Although we're here to talk about zoning, I don't see how I can do it without mentioning the licensing to you and how it relates, but, you know, be aware, you're really focusing on the zoning aspect. So, House bill 2646, several consistency issues, it added gram conversion, so we're euro-friendly now. It changes the definition of dispensary and grower, and I'll get more into that, because that definitely is about what we're doing tonight. It also created hazardous versus non-hazardous processor distinctions. Now, it created it, it didn't define it, and unfortunately, I'll get into that in a minute. There are additional tweaks to the school distancing, like I said, it's going to change November 1st, even though it's already changed effective May something. And then, we have changes to the way the state is going to do their certificate of compliance process, which doesn't affect our language, but is something that our staff will have to be ready to respond to. Okay, so, the definitions of dispensary and grower are changing under state law. Previously, and I'm going to talk about processors, this really relates to processing, the definition of processing was so broad, like I said before, it just affected everything you did with marijuana. And so, on a state level, they're a little bit behind the City of Norman, to tell you the truth, because they're recognizing that pre-rolling, grinding and pre-rolling can and maybe should be considered part of a dispensary function. So they're expanding the definition of dispensaries to include package and prepare pre-rolls and sell them to patients. Growers are allowed to package and prepare pre-rolls and sell them to dispensaries. So it's all going to the same places, it's just pre-rolls are now in the mix with the actual raw product. So what it means for us is, those state definitions have changed, and we reference the state definitions. So we don't have to amend any language, we just have to be aware that now, under our code, those things are going to change, too, with the state law. We already have a tier-one processor, we've talked about that tonight, that's going to become moot, because it is now the same thing as a dispensary. So what'll happen is, we'll stop issuing those licenses on November 1st, and any zoning going forward would be the same thing as a dispensary. Now, the changes that are happening tonight are minimal, that language is not being removed necessarily, just because it's moot, and that's simply because we know there are more changes for medical marijuana on the horizon on a state level, and it would probably be premature to try to guess too much about what those are going to be. Goodness, this thing clicks fast, and I apologize. There we go. So the next change is, state law said, "Hey, OMMA, hey, Department of Health, you can create distinctions and different categories for hazardous versus non-hazardous processors." We don't know what that means yet. It didn't define it, just said it could happen, and said the state health department would do it. As you know, they regulate with rule passage. I've been in contact with the OMMA, who says they will have something ready by November 1st, but they can't tell me, or anyone else, what it is yet. So unfortunately, I, I don't know what that's going to look like. What we've done is, we've set up our licensing categories to respond to that, and we've added to our definitions of tier-one, two, and three processors, language that makes it clear that where those things are going to be incorporated. Now, obviously, with words like hazardous, non-hazardous, it seems pretty likely that that's going to drill down to a matter of extraction. We have extraction processes that involve chemicals that have been called in other places volatile versus non-volatile. In fact, this bill had that language in it at first, it changed midway to hazardous, non-hazardous. And then you have, like, cold water press, which, you know, has nothing to do with chemicals or anything like that. You've heard some of those discussions here with various processors, it's just that there's never been a distinction, it's always been under the big umbrella of processing, even within Norman. So it's possible the state's going to try to separate those out. Because we don't know where that's going to fall, we had no basis to actually recommend zoning uses. And the reason I'm going into this is because we might see those coming once we get that information, but it will have to be in the future, because we just don't know what they are. So we are ready to handle it when they get here, and we'll be ready to make further recommendations if we think they're necessary once we learn. I don't know how that's happening. Finally, and this is, this is not in direct response to state law necessarily, so much as it is a part of what has been happening on a state level in the last several years. Waste disposal facilities were created as a category during the 2019 round, and you probably remember hearing about that. The thing was, licenses were not initially issued, rules were not initially put out there for the issuance of, and once they started becoming issued, they were issued on a very limited level. In fact, the law first said that you could only have 10 within the state. Now, come November 1, 2021, that 10 limit is going to go away. So now is the time, now that they have finally started issuing those licenses, to place them. And so, I think I have the language in here. Waste disposal facilities can dispose by open burning, incineration, burying, mulching, composting, or a catch-all, any other technique approved by the DEQ. So that's pretty broad, we have referred to state definitions so far, and that is the way that staff recommends that we continue to address this subject. However, the way we have written in the uses for waste disposal facilities, you'll see that we've kind of anticipated how it would actually fit into those areas. And again, these were limited to only 10, and I think as of today, or, sorry, as of a few weeks ago, there were only nine in the state of Oklahoma that I could find. But pretty soon, we could have more, and some could locate in Norman. Because there's such a low number anticipated, there really wasn't a whole lot of places that it looked like it was consistent with our zoning, and so that's where they are, just a very few tweaks for these waste disposal facilities. Staff recommends that you consider a special use in C2, general commercial, but incineration only, and that's because it's consistent with other types of incineration activities like crematoriums. And then, a permitted use in I1 is recommended, but again, only incineration and composting, anything such as burying, mulching, open burning would not be in there. Now, it says permitted use in I2, but you're familiar with our I2 ordinance, it allows everything unless specifically not allowed. So that's why it's going to be a permitted use in that category, because it's not going to be spoken about. I do want to make one small comment on open burning, just in case you're curious. We do have other ordinances on the subject of open burning that have been addressed in the context of medical marijuana. The way it reads now, this is not one of the exceptions to Norman's open burning ban. So I, I do not think that we would have an open burning waste facility locate in Norman, consistent with our code, as it's written right now. So this is the schedule for considering this, this package going forward. We need to rush it to city council for the first reading on the 14th, second and final, the meeting after that on the 28th. And then, it does not have an effective date for the ordinance, so theoretically, it's, it really is effective 30 days later, as far as the waste disposal facility zoning, but the state law on all the rest of it doesn't become effective till November 1, so that's how we wrote it. Come November 1, the other stuff will take effect. And I've just given you a short list of, of maybe what you can expect to hear from me about coming forward. I, I know from our legislative counterparts at OML that we're going to be dealing with future changes, perhaps for recreational use. The OMMA rules are going to be updated soon on hazardous, non-hazardous. And then, of course, as the staff report has said, we did not recommend any new fees or changes, again, because we just don't feel we know enough about this. So what has been recommended is strictly in line with what already existed. But again, that's a licensing issue. So I would ask for any questions you might have. Go for it, guys.
Go ahead.
I'll go first. Does incineration actually destroy the, like THC and the other, I, I, there are a lot of compounds inside marijuana, but does, does incineration destroy them? Because I'm imagining, you know, just a smoke stack of, like, pot smoke, you know, and blowing... a smoke stack of, like, pot smoke, you know, and blowing over to a school, and kids getting high. So, I mean, is this possible or not possible?
And so, I should just be completely honest and say, from a chemical standpoint, I do not know the answer to that question. I know that the standards for how waste should be disposed of are going to be extremely specific matters of state law, which is why we haven't ventured into that area. As far as whether there could be any effects from, I guess, are you asking for any fumes that might be released during the process?
Yeah.
That's not a matter that I'm aware of, actually. Again, that would have to be addressed by that. That's something we could look into and get more information on, though. Yeah.
And odor also, since we don't have any ordinance for odor. Because, you know, I'm thinking about where I grew up. The city, the city put in a landfill a couple miles from my parents' house, and if the wind blew the wrong way, it did not smell good. And I'm just thinking, you know, we want to be very sensitive about where these were allowed to be placed.
But parts different.
What about, I mean, crematoriums is a great example on this, because it's a similar, sounds like, for the incineration. I mean, a crematorium, I mean, what's kind of the, what are the requirements on those, as far as, I guess, gases and smoke go?
Well, I mean, when you don't have a, and I can't speak to that directly, I'm not sure. Are there any applicable zoning standards that would address that?
Crematoriums, like, what's the requirement on, like, the smoke, and I guess gases and things that come through that process? If they're allowed, they're allowed in C2.
There are a lot of special use in several districts, but I think there's a qualifier on there, to be honest with you.
And while she's pulling that up, I will go back to something we actually addressed a little earlier tonight about odor regulations. We don't have those, it's not a state subject yet either. But I do believe Commissioner Bird mentioned, and this is absolutely right, there are state law controls for nuisances that haven't always been in place, always will be in place in that regard. And so, that's why that wasn't something we felt we had to write into our ordinance upfront, in order for private property owners, or even the city, to address those, if we felt that we truly had that kind of situation. And, again, I'll say one more thing before we get specifically back to the subject of crematoriums. I think that what you've asked about Commissioner Jabulinski might relate to whether there are any filtration systems, or anything else like that, that might be applicable under the state controls, and that's something I will certainly look for specifically.
Thank you.
Brooke, go ahead.
So, the restrictions for the crematoriums, there are five restrictions, just regards setbacks, applicable state and federal requirements for incineration equipment, and must be licensed at all times, and then their storage must be inside, stacks shall not be located on the front side of the roof of any structure, and then, direct access to an arterial street. So, it's going to be the federal and state guidelines that are going to mandate that.
And so, here with medical marijuana, what we have always done, and we've been very careful to make sure our ordinance makes it clear, they have to comply with state law. So, they will have to comply with the letter of state law when it comes to those waste disposal regulations, in order to be compliant with our zoning. Otherwise, they're not compliant with our zoning, just on a basic level, which makes things easy. But it could be that the state regulations do not necessarily address the issue you've asked about. So, I will find out what I can.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jane, too.
And the other thing, real quick question about OMMA. Are they addressing the need for inspections, going through and doing the inspections throughout the state of Oklahoma? They're in charge of that, correct? There's no inspection process here for the city?
Oh, it's actually pretty much the opposite. What has happened is that the OMMA has a process called a certificate of compliance. That was created in about 2019, and it was actually a great thing, because what we had before that were businesses that wanted to locate and get their state license, and they could obtain that without ever explaining whether they had applicable zoning, or they had met building code with the state. And so, you had people that already had a state license, and were extremely upset with cities that wouldn't let them locate. So, we got dealt into the front end of that with certificates of compliance, because now they have to come, and they get all of our city inspections from fire and code, and they get a zoning review, so that we can be sure that people aren't making investments on a state level that don't work out on a local level. The updates that have been made to the COC process are actually a little bit disappointing on the state level. Again, they don't prompt a change to our ordinance, but when it was passed, it would have been an annual requirement. Now, it is no longer an annual requirement, they only have to come back with a change of use or occupancy, which is a very hard thing to determine. Obviously, the benefit of that process was, is that it allowed us to learn the process. This is an evolving industry. They might go in and not realize they want to add CO2 enrichment to their grow operation at first. They might want to add that after the fact. And they might not realize how vital it is, safety-wise, to get a fire and code inspection for that kind of installation. So, I really do think that that's an unfortunate oversight in that change in the state law, and I kind of hope it'll be corrected. But again, it's nothing that affects the wording of our ordinance.
What was the change in the distance to the schools?
The distance is the same. It's the very confusing way in which it's measured. I have a notebook over there. One second. So, it's still 1,000 feet. Senate Bill 1033, let's see. The language in Senate Bill 1033, which was passed in this session and became immediately effective sometime in May, so it's effective now. You measure by calculating the distance in a straight line from the school door nearest to the front door of the retail marijuana dispensary, to the front door of the retail marijuana dispensary. So, essentially, front door of the dispensary, straight line to the nearest front, to the nearest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did they define front door? Sounds like there's maybe some discussion going on for what the door is.
Well, we were talking about, it actually says the closest front door to the dispensary from the school. So, it's not the front door of the school, but a door that's used, that's closest to the front door.
The school door nearest to the front door of the dispensary.
Not a school front door, any door in a school.
Right. Any school door.
I don't know how she measured on this new one tonight, but that's quite a difference at Norman High, because that door is off the cafeteria, and it's quite a ways from the front door that you would go into if you're coming in as a visitor.
I still think it's 1,000.
It's over 1,000 feet.
Yeah.
At the middle of intersection, up there, it's over 1,000 feet. I did the measurement.
Okay.
And so, they do have to comply with state law and get that license issued. It's just that that measurement has always been done by the OMMA, because it's always been their rule. And that does prevent situations where we might not, you know, agree with the OMMA on how the state is calling it, yet it's a state law that sets it. So, that's the simpler way of addressing it. So, that's what it is now, effective November 1st, because nothing can be easy, right? It's going to change. And I apologize, the bill I'm looking in now is about 50 pages long. Okay. The distance shall be measured from the nearest property line of the public or private school, to the nearest perimeter wall of the licensed premises of any such medical marijuana dispensary.
That's the parking lot.
That's the whole parking lot.
Yeah.
So, effective November 1st, the manner in which that 1,000 feet is going to be calculated is going to change yet again.
Like that.
But if, okay, well, if it's a property line, that's a, that's a little closer.
A little closer.
Nearest property line to the nearest perimeter wall. But again, the applicable state law now is the Senate Bill 1033, which we just read a moment ago.
We just went out to our cars to smoke, in the parking lot. We didn't have to.
So, again. The current is property line, the proposed November 1st is doors. Backwards, the other way.
Yeah.
Other way. Doors is the one now, perimeter wall property line is coming up. Any more questions about this particular ordinance?
I think it's smart linking it to the state.
I'm sorry?
I said, I think it's smart linking it to the state's ordinance or regulation. Let them do the work.
It has gone well for us so far, I think. There's been a lot of bumps that we've avoided, I think. Any other questions?
Any audience participation?
Any audience comments? Dave, you know I like my procedure.
Yeah.
Any planning commission discussion? So, Sandy, I know, we kind of discussed this before, but if you want to add to some of the comments we were bringing up.
I got it off my chest. I just, it just irritates me. And I get it, I get it, I realize it. I was in favor of the law as it was passed, I mean, the idea of the law. But, the whole thing is just frustrating to me. I got it off my chest.
Any other commission discussion?
I'll move. Second.
End of vote, please. You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried 6 to 0.
We've actually approved the annual report?
We've done, yeah.
Or we just say that we got it?
Could do this.
What's better to do? Are they just going to present?
Yeah, all they ever do is just.
So, our next item, I might need a little guidance on this, or we just addressed that we received it. But we have Item 22 Annual 2020 Status Report on Development and the Norman 2025 Plan, August 2021, bound separately. So, I'll take the staff presentation on this, and then, again, maybe a little guidance on if we vote on something here.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jane Hudson, Norman Planning Department. So, historically, this has been a presentation that we give to the commission, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. And, to my knowledge, there is no vote that you have to do. So, the annual development report, so this is for 2020, was obviously going to be on the agenda last week, but, or last week, great, last month. But tonight, here we are. So, for 2020, the overall value for the construction was up 98.8 million. For the commercial, it was up 18.5 million. Interestingly, Norman Public Schools had 37 permits with a construction value over 48.5 million, so that really shot their overall commercial value up from the previous year. And then, for the residential, it was up 80.2. On the residential chart here on this one, sorry, I'm trying to get my slides together So, what we have here is, we had 986 new units permitted in 2020. We had.
New units of single family?
No, sir. New, 986 new units, residential units permitted in 2020. So, we had a total of 537 single-family units. We had one mobile home, eight duplexes. We had 28 permits for multifamily, which equated to 440 units. And so, then, the total was 986. And as you know, this goes on, and it does the comparison for what the prediction was and stuff from previous years. But, the 986 units permitted during 2020 is 171% of the 2025 prediction of the 576 new units. The new single, 537 new single-family units is 126% of the projected 427. We had 440 new multifamily units in 2020, and that is 325% of the projected 135 units. We had eight new duplexes, and that's 57% of the 14 predicted by the land demand. In the annual development report, we also have the trends. As you can see, the actual single-family was at 7944. The predicted is 8257. Our actual, can't get this mouse to work, but the actual multifamily was 5786, where our predicted multifamily was at 2372. So, we're a little bit ahead of the game on that. With this map, it's just showing the residential construction in the areas that they were permitted. You can see these typically follow along with the plats, the final plats that you guys have seen in the last couple of years. You can see up in the northern area there, north side of Tecumseh, south side of Tecumseh, just north of Rock Creek, one of the areas that you guys looked at tonight. And then, of course, we have the areas down south of Highway 9, and then the scattered ones out in the rural areas. For the new non-residential activity, again, this is scattered throughout the urbanized area, and you'll notice we're having a trend in the rural area. Those noted for 2020 for non-residential, those are going to be this increase in the medical marijuana grow facilities that we've been seeing go up in the rural areas. Then, this is for our addition alterations. Again, they're just scattered throughout the city for any of our new commercial addition alteration permits that we're getting. For our land use plan changes, we had 27, I believe is what we had in here, 27. I'm sorry, this is the land use. We had six land use. We had 27 applications for rezoning during 2020. Now, with six more than we processed in 19. And then, this is your plating history. And again, you're going to see these areas up there, Tecumseh, north of Rock Creek, south of 9, we've got the plats coming in. We've got a couple preliminary plats still east of Claussen, north and south of Highway 9. So, we'll have more lots coming in in the next year or two. Our Norman Rule Certificate of Survey, those are out east of town. Have several of those. And that's a summary of the 2020 annual report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have on it.
Any questions? Okay, we don't need a vote, so we'll just move on. We have a withdrawn Item 23-O-21-22-3. Cox Brothers Holdings LLC requests special use for an agro wedding event venue for approximately 68.8 acres of property zoned A2 Rural Agricultural District, generally located at the southwest corner of 72nd Avenue Northeast and Tecumseh Road. This item has been withdrawn, so no action is necessary. Moving on to miscellaneous comments of planning, commission, and staff. Does staff have any information for the commission? Seeing none. Do the commissioners have any comments they'd like to make?
Let's go.
All right, then I will move for adjournment.
Good job. You've done a great job. You are a great leader.